Hold it here.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I would like to call the Monday, September 27, 2021, Common Council Meeting to Order. Clerk Jones, would you like to make some comments regarding the length of this meeting and other expectations?
Good evening, members of the audience. The public would like to just let you know that your mics will be muted in the virtual audience for purposes of audio quality. If you have a question during the appropriate time, please put your name and your address in the chat, and you will be called on during that time. If you have questions during the privilege of the floor, again, put your name and your address in the chat, and the council president will be, will call on you. During the meeting, you have five minutes to talk, and at the privilege of the floor, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. I would like to share that disrespectful, rude, or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech and/or actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person, may result in the person who's speaking losing or forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted time. At this time, our invocation will be given by Minister Lynn King, Jesus is Emmanuel. Thank you, Reverend King, and you may go to the podium. Thank you.
And greetings to all of you, South Bend Common Council members. We at Jesus Emmanuel do salute you and tip our hats off to you for all your labor here in the city called South Bend, Indiana. Father, we thank you so much for this opportunity to come before your throne. In the mighty name of your son, Jesus Christ, God, we bring this city before you, and we declare that you are Lord over our city. And God, we acknowledge you right now. We lift up our mayor. God, we pray that you will yet continue to lead him and guide him, as well as our common council members. God, continue to just touch them, God, and go before them. Let your Holy Spirit lead them and guide them in their decision-making. Grace them to be one, one in your love, God, with sound and sobriety of mind. Father, we lift up our school board, touch them, Superintendent Dr. Todd Cummins. Just be with them, God, in the name of Jesus. Father, we lift up Chief Nizgaski in our police department, Chief Buchanan, our fire department, God. Praying that you yet cover them, God, keep them all safe, and be with them in their judgment as they patrol our streets and put out fires. God, be with them in the name of Jesus. Lord, we just ask, God, that you will yet look down upon this city. Forgive us, God, of anything we have done that's contrary to your will. But, God, we invoke the power of your Holy Spirit over our city, that you will bless it, God, and that you will make it a model city, a refuge city, a city that's safe for our children to go to and fro. Release your angels, God, your healing angels, to heal, to keep us safe from this COVID-19, this pandemic. In the mighty name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth, we submit this city under your leadership. We lift up our clergy before you, God, praying that you will keep them strong and in your will, God, that we can be the examples that you called us to be under the leadership and the great example of Jesus Christ. And, Father, we ask that your love would just hover over our city. We cast out every form of violence, sickness and disease, poverty, God. Spirits of division and confusion, we cast it out by the power and the authority of your word, God, and the authority of Jesus Christ. We do humbly submit this city, this great city called South Bend, Indiana, in which you called us to inhabit, and we thank you for acknowledging you first in Christ Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Henry's here.
Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Warner.
Present.
Councilmember Wax. Councilmember Nizgaski.
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember Hammond.
Present.
Vice President McBride.
Present.
President White.
Present.
Eight present. Thank you. And Councilmember Wax is excused. Will now have the reports from the Subcommittee on Minutes. Report of the Subcommittee on Minutes. To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the September 13, 2021, meeting, and have found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. I would like to entertain a motion and a second to accept the Subcommittee on Minutes for the September 13, 2021, council meeting.
Move for passage.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgaski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Eight ayes. Thank you. There is no special business, nor do we have any reports from city offices. I will now entertain a motion to resolve into the Committee of the Whole.
So moved.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgaski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Eight ayes. Thank you. The Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading and public hearing. I wish to share with you that the bills that have been given a second reading and public hearing have been given a first reading and set for a committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill is discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. Our first bill is Bill 103-21. Do I hear a motion to hear the substitute bill as amended? So move.
Second.
It has been a... Do we have to do a count since we're all here? Even though we're all present? I think we still have to do a roll call, but I want to check, we don't have to.
We don't have to. We need to take roll calls on passage of bills.
Okay. Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Clerk Jones, would you please hear substitute bill 103-21? 103-21, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code to make miscellaneous changes for clarification and consistency to simplify development process. Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair. Bill 103-21 came before the Committee of Zoning and Annexation this afternoon and comes to us this evening with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Is the petitioner present?
Good evening. This is Angela Smith, zoning administrator for the City of South Bend. This office is located on the 14th floor of the County City Building. The bill before you this evening is an ongoing effort by the city staff to make sure that our 2020 zoning ordinance is staying responsive to development and is being correctly implemented throughout the city. As we use the ordinance, we're finding things that might need further clarification or perhaps some quick adjustments in order to really develop the type of built environment that we'd like to see in the city. This is a series of text amendments that will modify various sections of the zoning chapter of the zoning ordinance, and Michael DeVita from the city staff can help explain those a little bit further. This comes to you from the South Bend Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. DeVita.
Good evening, Michael DeVita, Principal Planner with the City's Department of Community Investment. Office is on the 14th floor of this building. So, much like the previous rounds of quick fixes of the zoning ordinance you saw, these are just some kind of modest changes to clarify how rules are applied, really looking just to enhance user friendliness. Many of these are, don't even change the rules. It maybe just rewords the rule or reorganizes it just for better understanding. Or kind of at most, as we covered earlier, it may provide some modest differences to like fence heights or how those rules are applied. So you received in your packet the rundown of all the changes that are included, so I'd be happy to take any questions you might have on those.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for Mr. DeVita? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go to the public portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of substitute bill 103-21? I don't see anyone in the virtual public wishing to speak in favor of this bill. All right, thank you. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? I don't see anyone virtually wishing to speak in opposition of this bill as well. Okay, thank you, Clerk Jones. At this point, the public hearing on substitute bill 103-21 is now closed. Councilmembers wish to make any statements? If not, would you now entertain a motion regarding substitute bill 103-21?
What's a favorable recommendation?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll? Yes. Councilmember Nizgaski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Eight ayes. Okay, thank you. Substitute bill 103-21 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. We're going to move on to Bill 114-21. Clerk Jones, could you please give that bill a second reading? Yes. 114-21, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code to increase the maximum building height in the U3 Urban Neighborhood 3 District, UF Urban Neighborhood Flex District, NC Neighborhood Center District, NC Commercial District. Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes. Bill number 114-21 came before zoning and annexation this afternoon and comes to us this evening with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond. Is the petitioner present?
Yes, again, Angela Smith, zoning administrator for the City of South Bend, with offices located on the 14th floor of the County City Building. This bill before you this evening is looking to address height regulations in our primarily commercial districts. Prior to 2004, the city had like a height and area map, so each property had its own height and setback requirements specific to that parcel. What we found at that point was that if somebody wanted to change the height, it had to come before the council and ask for rezoning to change the height district. In 2004, that was simplified, and each district had a set height, which was, for the most commercial districts, was three stories and 40 feet. What we've seen since that time is continued requests from developers who wish to build in South Bend and perhaps can't do it within the three stories as required by the ordinance. In those discussions, we have also found that the zoning regulations haven't really kept up with the building code requirements, and as the building code has improved for ADA accessibility and other things that require, for instance, elevators, if you're more than three stories tall, it starts to push the envelope and what's acceptable and what makes a project viable at only three stories. And so, most developers need to go to the fourth or fifth story in order to kind of offset the costs associated with that. In the past, the BZA was kind of used as the relief valve for that. It's not really the appropriate place for that. They're not supposed to look at financial considerations, very strict state law requirements for them. So, we really wanted to fix the zoning ordinance to be more responsive to development and kind of encourage what we want to see within the city. We often see a lot of buildings within the city that are already at the height requirements. Prior to 2020, we didn't have very good regulations in terms of kind of facade articulation or making sure these buildings had front entrances and things that would kind of reflect what we want to see and what historically had been built in the city prior to the 2004 zoning ordinance. So, 2020 is kind of turning back the dial. We want to make sure that we can continue to build good urban development in the City of South Bend, that we can be competitive with our peer communities. Right now, the only district where you can go more than three stories would be the downtown district. We all know that there's pressure, and we would like to see urban development beyond downtown. And so, it's really appropriate that we look to increase the height in the other district. This text amendment would apply to the U3, which is primarily urban multifamily, the urban flex, which is kind of goes in between. It could be multifamily, it could be small office, could be some limited retail, neighborhood center, which is similar to our mixed-use district, and then our true C commercial district. The proposed ordinance would allow for four stories and 55 feet, which is consistent with the building code requirements. The building code will go up to six stories in some instances, and we are looking at what we could do to increase height beyond this. But this is kind of our first step at an incremental improvement. In doing so, we also wanted to make sure we were protecting single-family residential districts. So, if you have a single unit dwelling, a single-family home in an S1 or U1 district, I wanted to make sure it wasn't dwarfed by a project next to it. So, we've included a provision that any portion of a building that would exceed three stories or 40 feet would be set back at least 40 foot. That's about the width of a standard city lot, and so, it provides some protection and buffering for the adjacent single-family if necessary. It would have encouraged, if you're next to a neighborhood center district, then you wouldn't necessarily have to kind of step that down. So, it kind of keeps like uses together. Again, we're trying to make sure that the 2020 and going-forward zoning ordinance that we're working with is really adapting to the changing we're seeing in requests in the built form and what people are looking to build, being cognizant of what the building code allows and the limitations of the Board of Zoning Appeals, but also making sure that we are efficiently using our land and encouraging good infill development within the City of South Bend and attracting development that wants to build here. All of this is kind of encompassed in here, and as I mentioned, we're trying to do this incrementally. And so, this is the first step in making sure that we're staying relevant with the local trends and commercial development. This comes to you from the South Bend Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? None? Okay, at this time then, we're going to go to the public portion. If there's anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill... Where are we at? 114-21. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Anne Hayes. I represent Five Corners LLC at 814 Marietta Street in South Bend, 46601. Five Corners is a locally-owned real estate development company with strong ties in South Bend, and we are very much in favor of this proposed amendment to increase the height of buildings in designated areas in the city. The increased height will really provide additional avenues for Notre Dame District... Sorry, excuse me, for South Bend to strategically maximize growth potential. And it's also helpful for the residents and visitors of South Bend to provide additional amenities and potentially new job opportunities as well. So, we think that the proposed amendment is a good deal for both South Bend and for the people who live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak in favor of this bill? I don't see anyone from the virtual public wishing to speak in favor of this bill. Okay, thank you. Then, at this time, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this bill? Please state your name and address for the record.
Jason Bedicki, 3822 West Ford Street. Don't mind the taller development requirement, but what I do mind is the 40-foot setback to protect single-family one housing. We constantly talk about wanting to create more affordable housing, yet when we create the zoning rules that continually protect single-family one zoning, all that does is continue to increase the cost of building affordable housing. So, I think we need to look at those things when we're making these ideas, these changes to the code. We need to make sure that we look at it from that lens of, is this meeting the end goal of creating more affordable housing in the city, and this doesn't, flat out.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the bill? I don't see anyone from the virtual public wishing to speak in opposition of this bill. Okay, thank you, Clerk Jones. At this point, the public hearing on Bill 114-21 is now closed. Is there any statements any council members would wish to make? Oh, I'm sorry. Angela, you do have a five-minute rebuttal. My apologies. Would you like to make a statement?
Sure. I just want to just kind of point out that this only applies to the... The setback only applies to the portion of the building that goes above the three stories and 40 feet. There's nothing that requires the building be completely set back. That can still be built with a setback. This is just really looking at the upper story that may be added, and it's really to ensure the adequate light and air that we have. I don't anticipate it impacting the affordability aspect of housing.
Okay, thank you for your comment. So, at this time, we're going to come back to the council. Does anybody wish to make any statements? Councilwoman Davis, I believe you want to make a...
No, that's what I was going to ask you to answer that question.
For the rebuttal? Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Hammond?
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to say, with the addition of the fourth-floor height, what I have seen, as I have met with developers, it is really allowing them a lot of additional creativity in creating rooftop gathering spaces and those types of building structures. So, I think it could add a lot to the appeal of the buildings that we are putting in in South Bend. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tomas Morgan?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to speak in support of this. I think that it does several things. Firstly, it makes more efficient land use overall in our city, increases density while increasing a potential housing stock that we desperately need throughout the city. But it also does so by protecting single-family homes with that 40-foot buffer. And finally, just to add that it's a really exciting development. As Angela said, this has not been reviewed in decades. Is that... I can't remember what year you had mentioned, Angela, but this really does move us towards looking at more urbanist principles throughout our city. Urbanist principles of planning and design that help to create human-scale, walkable, functional urban communities. And I think that's an exciting development overall. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warner?
I think Councilman Lee had also before me. Go ahead.
You go before me.
Okay, so I think, and I said this in committee earlier, I had a developer tell me, you know, Troy, I want to build affordable housing, but any kind of apartment building, I build it's three stories. I'm going to put an elevator in it, of course, but that $200,000 to $300,000 cost gets spread across those three floors, and I have trouble making it affordable anymore. And that by adding that extra floor, that lets me spread that cost over more units and keep it affordable and keep the rents lower. And I think that that just makes sense. So, that's why... And again, it increases density in the city and allows for more unique growth and development. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lee?
I would just like to say thank you for the presentation, and we said some things in the committee meeting that, you know, I just am grateful that we can be competitive. You know, how many opportunities have we lost to Michal Walker or El Carte because of this, the limit of three levels? I'm sorry, four levels. Three levels, I'm sorry. But being able to raise it up and be able to be competitive and get more investment in South Bend is a positive thing, and being able to eventually stay competitive and build great things in our city is a positive thing, so I'm very excited about this.
Thank you. Councilman Davis, you want to make a comment?
Right. I just wanted to paint a picture really quick. I want to support it because I support it in the committee. Just like the young lady came up earlier and said it's for Notre Dame. It is for Notre Dame, I'm sure, because that's where this conversation started. So, I have no reason to, you know, doubt that or even have a reason to go against that. But when we began to have these discussions about affordable housing, just don't say affordable housing. Is that 30% of the average median income, or is that 80% of the average median income? South Bend Housing Authority looks at the 80%, not the 30%, because the 80% is lower than the 30%. Most of the developers that come into the city of South Bend that want to build these condos or apartment buildings, they're hovering around 30% of the average median income, which prices out a tremendous amount of people that live in the City of South Bend. And so, let's just not keep saying affordable. Affordable for who? And so, by us continuing to color these conversations, making it seem like that it's all-inclusive when it's not, it's really misleading the public. We're pricing people out of this city. We're pricing ourselves out, to be completely honest with you, because I don't know any millionaire that sit up here right now. So, let's be conscious about how we color these discussions and the words that we use, the language that we use. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members wish to make a statement regarding the bill? If not, I'll entertain a motion regarding Bill 114-21.
Move for favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll? It's been a motion made and duly seconded. Councilmember Nizgaski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Eight ayes. Thank you. We are now going to move to Bill number 115-21. Clerk Jones, could you please give the bill a second reading? Yes. 115-21, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, for Budget Transfers for Various Departments Within the City of South Bend, Indiana, for the year 2021. Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair. Bill 115-21 comes to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation by the Personnel and Finance Committee.
Thank you. Is the presenter present?
Yes, Chair. Dan Parker, City Controller. My office is on the 12th floor of this building. Bill 115-21 is the first of our two normal quarterly budget adjustment bills. This is the budget transfers bill, so this does not increase nor does it decrease the 2021 budget. It simply moves money from one division to another within the same fund or from one cost category to another cost category within the same division, and the cost categories are personnel, supplies, services, and capital. The most significant one in terms of the number of lines on there is the first one, which is the movement of the Community Police Review Office budget from the clerk's office to the mayor's office. And then, there's a number of other ones on there that are a little bit lower dollar amounts, but I'm happy to answer questions on any of those.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Is there any council members that have any questions on Bill 115-21? Seeing none, I'm going to move to the public portion. Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak in favor of the bill?
I don't see anyone from the virtual public wishing to speak in favor of this bill.
Okay. Thank you, Clerk Jones. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
There is no one from the public wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 115-21.
Thank you. At this point, then, the public hearing on Bill 115-21 is now closed. Council members, do you wish to make any statements regarding the bill? Okay, if I do not, Councilman Warner?
No, I just make a motion to send 115 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, there's been a motion and duly seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please take the roll call for Bill 115-21?
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgaski?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. At this point, we're going to move to Bill 116-21, which is a substitute bill. Do I have a motion to hear the substitute bill is amended? It's been moved and seconded. Can we do an affirmation vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Clerk Jones, could you please hear the substitute Bill 116-21 for a second reading?
116-21, Public Hearing on An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Appropriating Additional Funds for Certain Departmental and City Services Operations for the Year 2021. Of $10,925,000 from the General Fund, number 101, $194,373 from the Parks and Recreation Fund, number 201, $920,041 from the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, number 202, $40,000 from the Law Enforcement Continuing Education Fund, number 220, $235,000 from the Code Enforcement Fund, number 230, $25,293 from the American Rescue Plan Fund, number 263, $484,544 from the COVID-19 Response Fund, number 264, $210,000 from the Fire Department Capital Fund, number 287, $1,798,000 from the Local Income Tax Certified Shares Fund, number 404, $56,500 from the Local Income Tax Economic Development Fund, number 408, and $758,270 from the Solid Waste Capital Fund, number 611.
Make a motion to accept the substitute.
I believe that's the wrong substitute bill was my, because one of the funds is wrong. It was taken out. Yeah. My apologies, Clerk Jones. I'm going to have to make you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And the general. Okay. Substitute 116-21, Public Hearing on An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Appropriating Additional Funds for Certain Departmental and City Services Operations for the Year 2021. $194,373 from the Parks and Recreation Fund, number 201, $920,041 from the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, number 202, $40,000 from the Law Enforcement Continuing Education Fund, number 220, $235,000 from the Code Enforcement Fund, number 230. From $484,544 from the COVID-19 Response Fund, number 264, $210,000 from the Fire Department Capital Fund, number 287, $1,798,000 from the Local Income Tax Certified Shares Fund, number 404, $56,500 from the Local Income Tax Fund Economic Development Fund, number 408, and $758,270 from the Solid Waste Capital Fund, number 611.
Thank you. Oh, yes. Is the petitioner present for the bill?
Make a motion to accept the substitute.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
All right, Chair. Thank you very much again, Dan Parker, City Controller. I'm going to share my screen. This is the same presentation that we went through in committee this afternoon, so I'll go through it again and happy to answer any of the questions, providing any of the additional information that we talked about. As we said, this is the substitute Bill 116-21. We normally break down appropriation requests into four categories, which are unanticipated expenses, capital expenditures, supported by new revenue, and administrative items. There's four different categories, just based on the number, or based on the types of requests here that make a little bit more sense. So the requests that we're breaking down in this substitute Bill 116-21, about $3.7 million of the appropriation requests are for the capital lease, the City of South Bend 2021 capital lease. Another $485,000 is for the appropriation of an allocation of a community development block grant that was allocated to the city through the CARES Act. The sort of catch-all category is a $520,000 appropriation for sort of other miscellaneous items that have come up over the course of the year. And then the large appropriation request in this bill is $9.8 million for ARP-related expenditures. So that brings the total appropriation requests in the substitute bills to about $14.5 million. And so going through each one of these sort of one by one, on the capital lease side, the $3.7 million, almost million dollars, as we talked about during committee, this is just appropriating the purchase of the capital equipment itself. This was intended, the purchase of these vehicles were intended during the 2021 budget process. The debt service from this purchase is in the 2021 budget as well as in the proposed 2022 budget. And this approval simply allows us to purchase the vehicles themselves. It's fully funded with the incurrence of a debt obligation. We do one to two of these a year. We like financing vehicles with capital leases because we pay the leases off over a five-year period, which means our cash flow kind of approximates the useful life of many of the vehicles. So we pay it off over a five-year period. We use the vehicle over a five-year to seven-year period, depending on what kind of vehicle it is. And that way, we can match our cash flows and our use. So we do buy a lot of vehicles via capital lease, and that's what this appropriation is for. And the breakdown of the vehicles is in the detail to the bill. The second bucket in the appropriation requests is the appropriation of an allocation of community development block grant to the city. This is the third allocation that we've received of the CDBG through the CARES Act that was passed in March of 2020. And so this amount is $485,000. That's the full amount of the allocation, and we are just asking council to appropriate funding for the amount of the allocation. Councilmember Hammond, during the committee meeting, you asked, not specifically related to this, but it's sort of tangentially related, how much we've utilized or how much we've been reimbursed of the CDBG allocation, CDBGCV allocation, as well as the ESG CV allocation. I do have those numbers. The total allocation of CDBG dollars from the CARES Act was $1,975,000. And so far to date, we've been reimbursed $1,200,000. So there's about $775,000 left to be reimbursed on the CDBG side. On the ESG CARES Act allocation, the total allocation was $1,547,000. And reimbursed to date is $1,139,000. So just about $400,000 left on the ESG side. So did want to provide those numbers. The third category of requests in the appropriations bill is sort of a catch-all category of $520,000. As I mentioned during committee, this is a relatively low amount, which is not unusual for the third quarter of items that have come up. The large items in there is about $165,000 for the reappropriation of funds for the River Lights Phase Two project that was originally appropriated in 2020. Half of that is actually matched by a grant from the National Endowment for the Arts. And so I don't know if I mentioned that during committee today, but that is simply a reappropriation of something that lapsed at the end of 2020. Additionally, $200,000 of this is for an appropriation for the East Race Gate and repairs to the East Race Gate. So the center gate is actually stuck in the down position currently. The controls that control the gate failed in July timeframe, I believe, and we believe it will cost about $200,000 to repair that. Not only is it important because it helps us control the flow of the river so that people can raft down the East Race, which is important, but there's actually safety issues involved. If somebody does fall into the East Race, we want to make sure we have the ability to close the gate so that we can perform rescue there. And then also, there is a requirement from the Department of Natural Resources that we close the gate nightly, at night during the fall and spring times to help with fish activity. And so make sure that the fish are using the fish ladder and aren't going through the East Race. And so we do need to make that repair, and we're estimating that at about $200,000. The other item that's in there is about $40,000 for additional police training, de-escalation training, and training for specific specialties. This is actually a great thing for us. It's due to the fact that we have more officers than we were anticipating growing through our recruitment class, as well as officers moving into new specialties within the department. We are asking for some additional dollars to be appropriated for training. $40,000, just as a comparison, it's a little over 20% of the overall police training budget. So it is a relatively small amount relative of the total budget, but we do have a little bit bigger need there, and so we're asking for an additional appropriation. There are a few other items in that third category. I'm happy to talk through any of them if council members do have questions, but they're all relatively small compared to those three. And I did want to make sure that we had time to talk about the big bucket, which is the ARP-related spending of $9.8 million. This is a screen that we went through in depth in the committee meeting this afternoon, as well as has been shown several times during the 2022 budget process. This is actually the entirety of the proposed ARP-related budget for the city from the administration. So you'll see that there's a column for 2021 proposed spending and then 2022 proposed spending. Obviously, the 2021 proposed spending is what we're here to discuss. As we said, this is a substitute bill, and so what we want to just highlight is items that were removed from the initial bill. So there were essentially three items that were removed from the initial bill. The first one was $2 million that was put into the initial bill to make sure that we had enough room to, if there were additional priorities that came up, either from council members or from the community, in between when we advertised the bill and when we bring it for a vote, we wanted to make sure that we had advertised the proposed budget at a higher level so that the bill could actually accommodate those increased requests. It's the same thing we do with the annual budget bill, and we'll talk about that in a couple of bills here. It's the same thing we do with the annual budget bill. We advertise high, and then we bring it down to the actual budget level to make sure that we have enough room there. So we did not end up getting any additional requests in there, so we did remove that $2 million placeholder. We also removed $625,000 for sustainability programs. What the thought was here is that we wanted to make sure that this bill was only the stuff that was time-sensitive, that needed to be appropriated in 2021 in order to meet some kind of pressing or immediate demand. We think that these are great programs, and we want to get started on them, and we want to implement them. But we do recognize that there's a desire out there to have more conversation before we start spending that money. And it is, apart from the delay of the programs, not going to cause any immediate harm if we delay that and have some more conversation, so we did remove that. Then the big one was the removal of the $23.7 million interfund transfer, which was for revenue replacement. So again, high level, just to dive into that, as we did in committee this afternoon, this is presented as an interfund transfer from the ARP fund to the general fund. It will be presented in our financial statements as decreased expenses. The way we calculated the $23.7 million, this is all based on Treasury Department regulations. It's calculated on an entity-wide basis, so we do not look at individual funds and the revenue that reduced due to COVID-related to each individual fund. We look at it at an entity-wide basis. All losses in revenue are presumed to have been due to COVID. So we do not have to prove that any reduction in revenue is because of COVID. It is presumed to have been due to the pandemic. And the way the calculation works is comparing what they call counterfactual 2022 revenue, or excuse me, 2020 revenue with actual 2020 revenue. Counterfactual revenue is essentially what would our revenue had been had we not had a pandemic. That's the intention there. And the way that that's calculated is by the Treasury Department rules, actual 2019 revenue plus 4.10% as a growth factor from 2019 to 2020. We then compare that with actual 2020 revenue. Importantly, we don't use all of our revenue. We use what the interim final rule calls a general revenue, which includes things like tax revenue, as well as current charges for services, interest income, intergovernmental revenue from state and local governments, but not from the federal government. But it excludes things like proceeds from debt and, very significantly, revenue from the water utility. Revenue from our sewer utility and solid waste is actually included. That was clarified in an FAQ from the Department of Treasury. The sewer utility and solid waste is included in these numbers, but water utility is excluded. So when you calculate that and you take into account all those rules, these are where the numbers come out. You see our 2019 actual on there, revenue of about $218 million. You add 4.1% to that to get revenue of $227 million in the counterfactual world, and then compare it to our actual revenue of $203 million, and that's where that $23.7 million number in revenue reduction comes from. In terms of what this $23.7 million number actually means, the way this works is that the federal government gave us money, that $58.9 million that the federal government gave to the City of South Bend. We brought that money into the ARP fund, and this bucket right here, transferring a portion of that money into the general fund, that's the revenue replacement calculation. Both the general fund and the ARP fund are going to be utilized to spend on strategic priorities. And so as I said, this is the revenue replacement piece, but this is the ARP-related budget. So the revenue replacement is not a true expenditure in the sense that we're not spending money out into the community. We're moving money from one fund to another. It's important to keep in mind that all three of those green lines, green arrows, require appropriation by council. So even though $23 million would be moved from the ARP to the general fund, if the request had stayed in the bill, which it did not, we would still require an additional appropriation from council to actually spend that money in the community from the general fund. So this is not committing the council to anything. It's just moving the money from one fund to another. Because of that, there are proposed spending in the bill that are both from the ARP fund, as I said, and from the general fund. So two of the requests are being paid from the ARP fund, and then four of them from the general fund. And again, that's just the flow of funds, as I showed. Both of those green arrows are requesting appropriation at this point. So with that, we'll move on to items that were retained in the substitute bill. The first two items are related to neighborhoods requesting funding for emergency demolitions to kind of jumpstart the proposed funding of 3.7 million, almost 3.7 million in the 2022 proposed ARP budget. There are buildings such as the Wilson Shirt Factory that are proposing hazards, safety hazards, where the wall of that building is literally crumbling into the street, that we want to address sooner rather than later. And that's why we're requesting a portion of this funding now in the 2021 budget. Also burned-out houses, other commercial buildings that pose immediate safety risks would be included in that emergency demolitions budget of $500,000. On the vacant development, building development financing side, this is something that we've talked about several times during the budget hearings. This is providing and establishing a loan loss fund to help developers develop their businesses within vacant buildings. Think of things like the Ward Bakery Building on Portage and projects like that throughout the city. There's a lot of projects that can be happening. We would like to request $500,000 to add to the $500,000 that's already in the 2021 budget to help jumpstart that fund and then be supplemented again by a $1.5 million request in the 2022 budget. Moving down to the safe communities for everyone, on the COVID response side, this is- is a $1.5 million request for all the unanticipated expenses that the city has incurred since March of 2020. Sanitation equipment especially is very expensive, masks, gloves, things that are direct response to COVID, as well as emergency economic support. All of these things were appropriated through council, and so council is aware of all of these expenses. But the total of unanticipated expenses from the city side from March of 2020 until essentially today is right around 1.5 million. And so we're asking to utilize the ARP funds to help cover those unanticipated expenses. On the COVID facility side, this is something that was discussed during the budget hearings. This is to begin the design work on something that will then be appropriated or requested to be appropriated in 2022, an additional $1.8 million for the upgrades themselves to Century Center and the Morris Performing Arts Center to allow us to bring people back into those venues. If we are going to bring back people safely in the COVID world, we have to do things like upgrading our ventilation system, upgrading our HVAC system, upgrading our our touchless point-of-sale systems and and touchless restroom systems and and all sorts of things to make sure that people stay safe. And so this $200,000 would help us begin the design work on what that would mean to to then be implemented and constructed in in 2022's budget. Moving down to the equitable access to opportunity side, there's there's $3.6 million there. Most of that is for utility relief. $1.5 million is for solid waste operational support. This is, this was a part of the rates compromise that we that we talked about with council back in August, in July and August. Essentially, the the compromise was delaying the increase of the solid waste rates until 2022. But what that means is that if nothing changes, solid waste is actually going to end 2021 with a negative cash balance. And so we do need to supplement that cash balance by by transferring in some ARP funds, and that's what this $1.5 million is for. There's also a utility refresh program, which is assistance for residential utility customers without, who have outstanding utility bills. I went through these numbers in committee today. There's $2 million allocated for that, which is right about the amount of outstanding residential bills over 60 days. There's about 7,800 individual accounts that have a balance that's greater than 60 days past due, and of those, about 3,800 have a balance greater than 90 days past due. To give some context, we have about 40,000 resident customers overall, so almost 8,000 is almost 20% of of all accounts. So that is a significant number. The assistance would only be given out after all other avenues are pursued, including potentially payment plans, definitely looking for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, which I know we've we've heard that is is being utilized heavily and is being pushed heavily, which is great, that through the through the county, as well as upcoming, starting in November, through the federal government, the the low-income household water assistance program or the LIWAP program, we're excited for that to start as well. And then the last item here is $100,000 for what we what we're calling streamlined assistance. Essentially, there is a lot of programs out there that aim to help people, and most of them aren't utilized as effectively as they could be. And so all of the conversations that we have about how are we allocating money to help solve problems are great, but if people don't actually access the funds, then it doesn't actually do anything. And so this is really designed to try and help us figure out how we can help people access the funds. So inventory the local assistance programs, figure out what, how you sign up for them, what are the income verification processes, and then see if we can launch new tools or even just documents and guides that will help streamline those sign-ups and help realize if if you get to sign up for one program, you're probably eligible for all these other programs as well, and and make that process simpler for residents. We also wanted to add in data and performance management so that we can know sort of how well we're doing in in getting this these funds out there. The last two appropriation requests are down there under youth and workforce development. We'd like a million, to request a million dollars of a total of $11.1 million for the Dream Center. This is to get started with with the design of that center, to get started on working with the community on designing that center, designing not only the physical structure, but also what kind of programs would be there. The usually engineering and architects are about 10% of the overall cost, and that's how we got to a $1 million cost out of the total budget for that Dream Center of $11 million. And then lastly, the pre-K centers, about $2.5 million to supplement $2 million in the 2022 proposed budget. I know that Laura Jensen from from United Way, what was on in the the committee this afternoon, and I believe she may be on this evening as well, to just talk briefly about the the work that we would like to do with United Way to put pre-K not only on the southeast side, which is about to break ground, but also on the northwest side. So there you are, Laura.
Oh, thank you. And so to just expand on that, our Southeast Neighborhood Center is breaking ground tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM. And just to sum it up, it's this under-one-roof concept of bringing childcare, healthcare, and rotating social services under one roof to really reduce barriers and increase the accessibility piece, to really help families, children, and individuals reach their full potential. And the main component of this project is really childcare, and we knew that while we're adding over 100 seats to the southeast side, that is not enough when looking at the county as a whole. I shared earlier that we have over 21,000 children under the age of five in our county, and 62% of those children are in need of childcare, while only 36% of those kids actually have access to quality childcare programs. When looking at other areas in town, we identified with the help of the city of South Bend, the northwest side of South Bend, particularly over by LaSalle Intermediate to Launchy Second Location. The childcare will once again be in partnership with the early heads, or with Head Start of Elkhart and St. Joseph County, and we will be increasing the number of infant toddler and pre-K Head Start slots in our county. Dr. Gohardo has shared that she has over 200 infants and toddlers alone, just on the waitlist. The beauty of bringing in Head Start as one of our partners in the childcare center is it allows us to make sure that every single child is able to access a quality childcare program through their Community Childcare Partnership Grant, which then covers the cost of tuition for families that qualify through their income guidelines, but by also the financial support that she is bringing to the table to fund those slots, it allows us to then implement a sliding scale to really make sure that this program is affordable for families and that we're not just coming in and saying, here's this high-quality center, but it's only available for a few of those. It really and truly is for working families, for families living in poverty, and everyone in between. The other really amazing thing that we're able to do in the southeast and bring to the northwest are some really incredible partnerships for the childcare program. So we'll be bringing in the High School Curriculum, as well as Conscious Discipline, which is, it is a social-emotional learning curriculum to provide trauma-informed care at its core. On top of that, we'll be bringing in Logan Center to allow for in-classroom support for those children, because what oftentimes what we find is when a child is struggling and we identify them as a as a danger to the classroom, most often they're removed from the setting. That does not do anybody any good, specifically that child and their family. And so to bring heads, or to bring in Logan Center with their trained developmental therapists to work with the child, with the teacher, and with the other children, and provide a really safe and nurturing environment in which they can grow, we've never seen anything like this. On top of that, we'll be able to provide in-classroom OTPT and speech therapy, as this traditional push-in method versus pulling a child out of the classroom, teaching these skills, and expecting them to be able to engage in a classroom in a traditional setting. We also will be bringing in Boys and Girls Club to expand their after-school programming as well and offer 250 new slots for school-aged children before and after school. We've been in conversations with Dr. Cummings. He sits on the board of United Way, and last week when talking about this project, it was, this is an incredible complement to what we're trying to do as a school corporation, and you are able to reach and provide services that we are not able to do so. We also have the Bowen Center coming in and increasing the mental health options that we have specifically for youth. So there are so many incredible opportunities that we have with childcare being at the heart and soul of this. And so at a minimum, 200 seats that we'll add to the northwest, and it'll be the second location of what's hopefully many throughout the county and specifically throughout the city of South Bend.
And this is all new? You've never done this before?
So the south, it's all new. So this model is one that-
Excuse me, that was not directed from a council member, so you do not have to answer that question. And I ask if everyone could please be muted. Would you please continue? Thank you.
So it's not proven? Okay, thank you.
It is proven out in other parts of the country, and we've had the opportunity to learn and build this program under their mentorship. And so it is something that we know that we have seen work in other places and something that we truly believe in here within our county.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you, Laura. And with that, that is the the last appropriation request, and so we'd be happy, I'm sure Laura would, or I would, be happy to answer any questions that council has.
Thank you, council members. Mr. Warner, Councilman Warner.
Thank you. Dan, can you back up to the green arrows slide for us?
Surely.
On the shift of $23.7 million from the ARP fund to the general fund. And I think this is still foggy and confusing. Why would we move if the money from the ARP fund to the general fund like that?
Sure, yes, great question. So the the revenue replacement, what that allows us to do is to satisfy the restrictions and the requirements of the Treasury Department. So that's an allowable use of the ARP funds, and so we satisfy that that use through the revenue replacement. We bring the money into the general fund, and then we can utilize that money however the council sees fit, and we can decide how to utilize that locally. So we are not bound anymore by either the purpose restrictions or the time restrictions given by the federal government.
So things like traffic calming and daycare and things like that that don't fit the definition of what Treasury lets you spend these dollars on. We're in essence capturing those lost funds and spending it through that method on these things that we'd like to spend the money on, but they don't fit the qualifications of Treasury. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilman, Mr. Davis.
Thank you. Dan, you know, I I don't empathize with you. I empathize with you. I sympathize with you. You were given a job, a task, to give this council a level of education and understanding on all of these things quite a bit, quite a bit. As a matter of fact, there was some monies, excuse me, that was extracted, and then there was a substitute bill that came down all within, you know, 12 hours' time today. I'm still not comfortable. Said this earlier, the amount of time that we have spent on this matter has been quite small in comparison to the time that we could actually take. You know, I I've been at this, man, for more than a decade. I think I follow the numbers pretty good. I have an advanced degree, took a lot of accounting courses. I'm still not comfortable with it. And like I said before, I think that earnestly, there should be some more time spent. Would you be interested in delaying this for another couple of weeks, given all the new information that has been added and taken away? It just, it's too much. I was sitting here and I and I called myself like, you know, not here anymore because it was just that much, and I woke back up.
So is the question whether-
Would you be interested in delaying this for another couple of weeks so that we have a good grasp on what's going on as a council? Yes, that's my question.
So no, I believe the administration would would like to propose these for this evening. The the requests in the 2021 proposed budget are time-sensitive. The the intention of the substitute bill was to remove the items that we didn't think were time-sensitive, and so we do believe that the things like emergency demolitions and and some of the other items on there, we just want to get the money out into the community. And so, yes, that we, that is why we would propose that action be taken tonight.
So two weeks out gives me a little bit more time to go through it, have a conversation with you, because earlier we were talking, and I remember Councilmember Warner was saying out loud that, I forget exactly what he said. He says something to the tune of, great negotiation. I think that that was the word, maybe the language. I may, I may have said it wrong.
No, I didn't say anything like that.
What did you say? Could you correct me, please?
No, I thanked him for making the change and for bringing a compromise bill.
Compromise, that's what it was. I'm sorry. Sorry, it did me any harm. Sorry. But you said compromise, as if there was another conversation that took place before we got here, was making me believe that there was. That's why I'm asking, you know. Mayor is here. Glad to see you, James. Appreciate you being here, Mayor Mueller. But I really think that, given what has taken place and what has been changed over and over again, Henry needs more time. Would you mind commenting about that or seeing if there was any room in there that we could delay this maybe another couple of weeks? We'll be back in a couple more weeks.
Good evening, council members. Mayor James Mueller with offices on the 14th floor of this building. And, you know, as Dan mentioned, we stripped out everything in the, from the original bill to the substitute bill that we thought could be delayed. There are time-sensitive things that that we need to get going on. We're behind on on some of these things. Things don't happen. You know, we can talk about budgets and priorities and things, but to actually get things done takes a long time. So take the Dream Center, for example. We've said that this would be designed with the community and by the community, and of course, we want, you know, obviously within budget constraints, but the more engagement you have, the longer the process has. So if we even want to break ground next year, we're already falling behind schedule. And every week does matter when you're talking about these types of projects. The other, you know, the the pre-K centers, they're looking to break ground in the spring for the the second center. So that's, you know, there needs to be some certainty as they move forward to get the get the progress, or get the process in place. So we've taken the other things, you know. I know this is confusing, this diagram.
This has all been confusing.
This is confusing, so we took that out to have more time to talk about it. But in actuality, this wasn't, this, we didn't think this would be controversial. We're not spending any dollars. This was 20-some million dollars. We're just changing the classification, and council still has to approve whatever we spend those dollars on. So we didn't think that would be controversial. We still don't think it's controversial or even worth, it's more of an accounting nuance. It's a strange accounting thing with the ARP dollars, but, you know, we've, we've taken that out because we thought it was a needless distraction, because we do have time to to make this. We're still going to propose to do this because this is what enables us to invest ARP dollars in things that we know we all care about. Neighborhood infrastructure, demolitions of unsafe buildings that that are, you know, causing hazards, all sorts of things. So that that's why we're here, you know, here today. I'll say, process-wise, we provided a broad philosophical framework for the ARP spending in July, and we talked about moving some in, you know, roughly the $12 million or so in '21, and the rest through the 2022 budget process. And that's exactly what we're doing. When we gave the budget overview in August, we had most of these items for '21. Those are obviously in greater clarity because they're ready for action and need to be moved upon as quickly as possible. So we had that in August. This bill was filed for first reading, for the first meeting of the month, and so, you know, I don't know who reads their packet on first readings, but we've had this. Okay, well, good. There's a couple of hands there. It's been before, and and then it doesn't, you know, we don't get questions till the day of. We would have been happy to talk about this. So, you know, and I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, you know, we we had a placeholder too, in case, you know, the difference between filing a bill, advertising appropriations, and then having it ready for final passage is a month. And, you know, you never knew if there was going to be something that we were going to, that something else came up that was time-sensitive. So there was a placeholder in there. Nothing came to the forefront, and so here we are. And, you know, I guess, you know, we can, we can debate whether there there were issues with this particular funding, but- but I do not recall those.
Chair, the assertion, and this is, let me finish after this. There was an idea, obviously, that you felt like what happened was a distraction. And so, the bill, new bill was filed, right? It was a substitute bill that came down because, hey, we want to get away from all of the distractions that this may be causing. Well, I don't necessarily label those things distractions. I label those things people want to see different, right? They want to believe that this is going to be different. They're tied to the status quo. And that's what they're continuing to look at as we go through our budget process and then hear this is right now. So, it's not a distraction. It's real life. And I want you to be a little more sensitive to that, as well as Mr. Parker and whoever else that's in here. People feel a certain way about the process not working for them. And I think that that keeps being hammered in over and over again. It's not working for them. And it's just like, oh, well, we're going to do something different. Well, it's never different. It's always the same. And so, that's why I asked for a couple of weeks off. Maybe that gives people the promise that we're working with them. It's just two weeks. But, you know, I digress.
Thank you, Councilman Davis.
Thank you for giving my time.
Absolutely. Mayor, do you want to have a reply to that? If not, I'm going to move on to the rest of the council.
Yeah, I'll just quickly say again that we took out everything that we thought wasn't time-sensitive, and there will be costs to delay on these other items. Wasn't trying to say that, you know, concerns aren't legitimate. I'm just saying, on this one, we are literally giving the community and the council more flexibility for how to spend these dollars, not removing their oversight at all. So, that's where I'm saying it was a distraction because there is nothing, nothing in this weird diagram changes the fact of council will control those dollars being appropriated from the general fund. And by having them in the general fund, council has more flexibility in how to use that.
Counsel doesn't control the dollars. You control the dollars. We're saying that.
Councilman Davis, I believe you said you were finished.
That's not true, though. We don't, we don't control the dollars. You know that, Sheila. He writes a check, and we may sign it or not.
We're going to move on to other council members. Thank you.
Well, I mean, just to clarify that really quickly. Same with the ARP dollars. It's no different process. In state code, the executive will put forth appropriations, and the council will, can decrease or approve them. So, it's no different. That process that you're saying the executive's in control of is no different than with the ARP funds.
I would like to.
Yes, Councilwoman McBride.
Thank you. Mr. Parker, can you put back up the $23 million screen? And if I could add, and I thank you today for giving clarity on the $23 million. This is what I've been asking for since the inception of the budget process. And to be specific, so not to say that the money stream would not be different, however, there was no specific appropriations for us to see until today. So, where my vote have gone from a nay to a yay was exactly what I've asked for, for there to be clarity and specifics where these lines will be allocated. And from my understanding, the ARP funds are under the council's auspice to spend. So, we need input of if the appropriation of the funds for the ARP funds are where we deem appropriate. If, to my understanding, or my assumption would be, had I, I can't speak for the rest of the council, passed the $23 million today, that still wouldn't guarantee where that money would be spent and would go to without council input. And I can't say that I would have had an opportunity to say of this $23 million, I want curb sidewalks, lights, ceilings, fans, whatever. So, I am satisfied with the presentation that was given today because it now gave me exactly what I have been asking for and looking for to see exactly where the line items were going to be appropriated. So, to say that it just came today would mean now sitting in on the agenda process. Some council don't have that opportunity. But for me to sit in on it and see the $25 million, I was in contact with the president to talk about requesting to have it pulled, and that happened. So, whether we have a misunderstanding, miscommunication, with me on the other end being a department head for the county, we have input in, not to say that it would happen, but in the ARP funds, we have a wish list, if you will, to ask if we could use some of the ARP funds. So, my interpretation of the ARP funds and how it had been presented today was not at the level that I expected until today when Mr. Parker presented at committee. So, I commend you all for pulling back and now coming with a more specific eye view for us to look at. And the second comment that I wanted was earlier for today, is not from this presentation, but one of the things I did like the streamlining, if that would be a position, for instance, because I've been receiving some calls, and I know we've been talking about like how hard it is for some of the residents to apply for residential assistance and things of that nature. Some residents can't read, and they may need an interpreter and things of that nature. So, I am excited about the streamlined position to help to get us to have more people qualified for rental assistance and some of the other things that Ms. Angela spoke about earlier. So, thank you for the presentation and your responses.
Thank you, Councilwoman McBride. Councilwoman, or President White.
Thank you, Chairperson. I would like to thank the administration in regards to narrowing down those items that are time-sensitive, and also to give the council as well as the public opportunity to look at those dollars, the $23 million. As you've said, that we will have the opportunity to have that level of discussion in regards to where those dollars would go and what they would look like. And I think that is important because we cannot assume that from a public perspective, that individuals understand this budget process. When the American Rescue dollars were added, it was a great opportunity, and it still remains to be so, for not only the city but the county and even the school corporation to look at these dollars and to look at them from a strategic and intentional perspective. And so, now we have that opportunity to connect the dots. And I've been asking that, you know, that we look at all of the American Rescue dollars and that we can have a more comprehensive viewpoint. I tend to be a very visual person. I do read my materials. But again, you have so much information coming out, that's no excuse. But I think as we begin to look at the American Rescue dollars, and if we can look at them from a very comprehensive perspective, you know, these dollars are going towards strategic initiatives to these departments. And these are the dollars, and these are the outcomes that we hope to achieve. So, I do appreciate what we have before us, the substitute bill. And I think it's going to reap benefits as we move forward towards the budget final adoption, when we do get to that point. And I would also like to suggest that with the initiatives and the funding requests, that hopefully at the end, before the end of this year, that we could have like an update in regards to the last meeting, which we only have one in December. Okay, where are we at? What's the process? And what, you know, on these dollars here? So, that would be my recommendation. But thank you for your response.
Thank you, President White. Councilman Lee?
Yep. I just would like to say that today's committee reporting was very enlightening on figuring this has been a very complex issue. So, being able to look at it and see where those dollars are going to go and knowing that there is some dots that are being connected, that's all everybody was really looking for, is being able to get a good understanding of where these monies are going to be allocated and knowing that they're going to be utilized to help lift up our community. We have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and we don't want to make, we've got to be good stewards of it. And so, Dan, thank you for putting this together. And again, pulling those things that were not immediate items so that we can have some time to look at it and talk about it. And I think we just can talk about it and figure it out. Great things can happen from the conversations. So, let's get a understanding and be able to articulate what, how we're going to help move the city forward. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilman Lee. Councilwoman Hammond?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Mayor. It's good to see you. Just as a reminder to everyone, the ARP dollars come to us kind of in four buckets. One of those buckets is lost revenue and the negative impacts of lost revenue along with COVID expenses. Another bucket is bonus pay. Another bucket would be revenue loss from public services. And then, the final fourth bucket would be investment in water, sewer, and broadband, right? And what we heard Mr. Parker say is that by moving the dollars from the ARP to the general fund, it would satisfy the requirements of bucket number one under lost revenue. But not, but the expenditures from that $23,7493 would not necessarily fall within these buckets. It's just the $23 million. So, I just want to make that clear for everybody that's listening. I do have a couple of questions. First of all, out of the utility relief, the $1.5 million, you mentioned economic support and food support. Could I get some details on that, please? What was that money spent for?
This is on the response?
Yeah. Sure, yeah. So, we can get you the full breakdown of the actual, the entirety of the $1.5 million, and I can email that out. But on the food support specifically, that was $50,000 that was appropriated that we gave to Stan's Food Service, which was then given to a variety of food pantries and other organizations in the community to help with food insecurity during the pandemic. And then, economic stability, there was a number of different programs, including grants to restaurants to help them meet their rent and mortgages during the pandemic. There was some small business assistance dollars. There was some workforce development dollars. I can get you the full breakdown, though.
I'd like that. Thank you. Secondly, with the $200,000 that is identified for COVID response and facilities, you mentioned the Morris Park, the Morris Civic, sorry, Morris Civic. How does this fit into the renovations that are undergoing and are, is this $200,000 paying for new bathroom facilities and such as part of the rebuild or the remodel?
So, this is a little bit in addition to the Morris 100 project. So, the Morris 100 project as a whole is a conversation that we will be having with council in the upcoming months on how that will come together. This is specifically around the need to upgrade HVAC systems and other items and areas of the Morris and the Century Center because of COVID. So, had COVID never existed, these are things we probably wouldn't have done as a part of the Morris 100 project, if that answers your question.
We wouldn't replace faucets and those types of things?
Sure, we would. We would have done those things as a part of upgrade, normal upgrades, for sure. But we are specifically designing the way that the HVAC system works, for example, to be much more robust than it maybe needs to be because of the dangers of COVID.
But it is somewhat built into that remodel?
Sure. I mean, yes, you're right. There are maybe certain economies that we could get from it. Yes, you're right.
Okay. Thank you. So, going back to our buckets, I can see that the COVID response for the facilities, I'll give you that one, the utility relief for the $1.5 million, the utility refresh for the $2 million, which I'm going to assume that the loss of those utility fees are affecting operations. So, we need to get those dollars back. What I would request for me to be able to support this new substitute bill, if you would agree to remove $3.5 million, which is constituted in the 2.5 pre-K, the emergency demolition and the vacant building, and I'm not saying not to spend those dollars, but I just want the $3.5 removed from the outstanding $23,7493 that you're going to be pulling later, as we heard. So, I want $3.5 million to qualify as revenue loss. And then, the next time you ask to pull money, the 23 will be 3.5 less. Following?
I believe so. And I believe it can be a conversation we have when we do come back and have the conversation on the revenue replacement dollars.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond. Councilman Warner, did you have a comment? No? So, have I covered everybody? Has everybody got to ask a question that they have for Mr. Parker?
I just have a point of clarity.
President White?
In regards to what Councilwoman Hammond has requested. Mr. Parker, you're saying that when we come back to have that discussion in terms of the $23 million, that we still need to discuss that that would be part of those discussions? I want to make sure I have a clear understanding.
So, I believe what Councilwoman Hammond is requesting is that this $23 million transfer from the ARP fund be reduced by $3.5 million so that some of the expenditures for the pre-K centers and then the million dollars for...
The Dream Center.
The Dream Center?
No, I didn't factor in Dream Center. I factored in emergency demolition and vacant building development.
So, so that those would be paid directly out of the ARP fund instead of the general fund. The vacant development building fund is, or the vacant building development fund is already paid for out of the ARP fund, so that wouldn't be included in this anyway, as well as the funding for the Dream Center. But I believe that that was what the request was, was that you wanted more to be funded directly from the ARP fund and less to be funded from the general fund.
I want to reduce the amount that you are identifying as revenue loss.
So, yes, the revenue loss is what it is. There's a calculation. We can't, we can't change the calculation.
You would qualify these dollars along with that revenue loss. I'm not arguing with your calculations. You're much smarter than I am on that.
Okay, so all of our council members have had an opportunity? Okay. So, at this point, we are going to go to the, except I would like to say thank you for the presentation, by the way. I have, no, I don't want to rehash everything that we've all discussed, but I do appreciate the presentation this evening. So, at this time, we are going to go to the public portion. Is there anyone from the public here wishing to speak in favor of substitute bill 116-21? And I don't see anyone online. Is that correct, Clerk Jones? Do you see anybody?
I'm not sure if, Jordan, he just had his hand up. I don't know if he was able to put it down.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Okay, then we're going to move into opposition. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition of substitute bill 116-21?
Sharon Benicki, 3822 Ford Street. I don't even know where to begin with this, but $2.5 million for a childcare center. While I'll admit, the childcare is a great need in this community, does the city really want to get involved in childcare? And who's going to be responsible for the liability if a child gets hurt or something worse happens to a child? Does, you know, is that going on the taxpayer dollar? We've got to be very careful where you tread because this, everybody is suing everybody for every little thing. They're asking for $1.5 million immediately for the sewers because they compromised on the sewer rate increase. We discussed that at length. They didn't really compromise because next year's rates and the next three years' rates after that are... after that are actually higher than what they had originally proposed. And they, at the end zone game, they only dropped the rate increase by 44 cents. So for them to say they're in dire needs of this 1.5 million for sewers, ridiculous. And then you're building, you know, the Dream Building at 11.1 million. Can that be sustained? Can the building be maintained after the government steps out and stops spending money, you know, hand over fist? As we were driving to this meeting today, we drove past the Crox Center. I don't know if you've driven past there lately, but that building, as new as it is, is already in great need of repair. All of the soffits are dropping down off that building. When the city redid the center on Lincoln Way, they spent so much money rehabbing it, but then they cut all the staff so there was nobody left to maintain the building. When I asked Sanafoya into the city and I wanted to know how many utility customers we had, and I asked specifically, how many were 30, 60, and 90 days past due on their utilities? I was told that that report did not exist. And now, lo and behold, all of a sudden, they know how many customers are 30, 60, and 90 days past due on their water bill. So how can it exist for them but not for the general public? I think this needs to be slashed, cut back, and reevaluated and reexplained. So, no, I'm against it.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Parker, would you like five minutes for rebuttal?
There's a hand online.
Okay. Would you want to take them at the end, then? All right, thank you. So is there anybody else present here wishing to speak in opposition? If not, then we will go to, oh, Clerk Jones, I'm not sure. Is it just the one hand?
It's Jordan. Jordan, if you would unmute yourself and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Yeah, Jordan Geiger, 424 South Michigan Street, Unit 660. Can we go back in the presentation to the slide on where the dollars will be spent, the 9.8 million? Are we able to do that? Okay. So I'm just, thanks. I'm just kind of curious. Some of the council members noted that they were thankful for the administration mentioning how some of these items are time-sensitive. That's requiring for this bill to be passed tonight. Can you explain what and how time-sensitive these items are? Without the demolitions, because I definitely get sample street for sure. But can you explain the other items and how time-sensitive they are?
Okay, and that's your question?
No, can I keep going or?
You have five minutes.
Okay. So the other thing is, council members mentioned that this is a great opportunity, the word collaboration was used. I'm not hearing the collaboration particularly. I've heard over and over and over and over and over and over and over again, the use of this word equity among council members. And I haven't heard how we are partnering with any Black organizations, institutions, developers on any projects. For example, the point about the pre-K childcare center seems to be falling flat on many of you. Three of you have agreed to meet with Black childcare providers on Wednesday about the $2 million or 2.5 million. Yet you're willing to make this appropriation to a large nonprofit entity that has no record, and this is not just, any disrespect to the United Way because, you know, I definitely support the efforts. But whenever Black people come with ideas, what, what we're always asked is, well, what proven record do you have? How, how can you demonstrate success? And yet, that's not being asked here. Ideas are thrown out. This is what we're going to do. We're going to change the world. We're going to, we're going to do all of these things. And yet, those same questions and that same scrutiny is not being leveled against them. So I'm just curious as to the, on the collaboration piece, what Black organizations, entities, stakeholders are you, are you looking to collaborate with around this money? For example, I would be interested to know on demolitions, is the city going to have pre-bid conferences so that we can invite minority contractors into the room so they can get prepared for these bids that might come out for demolition projects? Because I haven't seen any data on the number of pre-bid conferences that have been held, not in any report. And that's required in the ordinance. Streamline assistance? I just think that's really, you know, problematic, or $100,000 for that? What does that even look like? I mean, we have lead money that has gone unspent for two years where you've remediated less than 10 homes. And every year, we've talked about the underutilization of, of, of programs, and they come up with this Band-Aid response. And so now, I'm really struggling to understand how this $100,000 that seemed to come out of nowhere is going to address this issue. Is that time-sensitive? Does that qualifies time-sensitive? Like, I'm just, can you just answer those questions for me, Dan, about the, what and how, you know, are these certain items here time-sensitive? What are you doing to collaborate with Black stakeholders and organizations? Where's the equity in this?
Are those all your questions, Mr. Geiger?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
That exhausted us.
Okay, that does, would you like to have a rebuttal of five minutes, Mr. Parker?
Sure, thank you, Chair. I, I tried to jot down, I had to run up here and grab my phone. I was trying to jot down all the questions, so if I miss any, I apologize. But Ms. Benicki, I believe, asked about the, the need for solid waste funds and the $1.5 million around that need. That need is there. That, that fund, if you look at our monthly financial reports for August, is already in a negative cash balance. So that, that there is no doubt that that, that money is needed. The reason it isn't a negative cash balance is because we did delay the implementation of the rate increase until 2022. And so that, that is what's driving that. The, on the Dream Center, Ms. Benicki asked about the maintenance and the ongoing maintenance costs of that. Maintenance of, of facilities is an important issue for, for the city. We're currently undergoing a facilities condition assessment that was appropriated by council and appreciate that, to really look at the state of all of our HVAC systems, all of our electrical systems, all of our plumbing systems, to, to figure out how we can fund a sustainable replacement plan for all those systems over, over the next number of years. As we present the budget, we, we present baseline spending and strategic spending intentionally, and, and we put the maintenance of facilities and, and other capital-like vehicles into baseline spending of, this is just money that we need to spend to keep, to keep the, the city running. And so, so we do take that seriously, and, and it is in the plan from a capital perspective and, and from a facilities condition assessment perspective. The, the, the other item that I believe Ms. Benicki mentioned was the, the report on the, the availability of 30, 60, and 90-day, the number of utility customers who, who are outstanding 30, 60, and 90 days in preparation for this effort to really get this down and to restart normal operations. Our INT team has done a lot of work to try and analyze exactly who these customers are, which one of them would qualify for the ERA assistance, which one of them might qualify for the LiWAP assistance when that becomes available. And so there's been a lot of data analysis coming out of this that is both within our customer service stat, which is happening later this week, and elsewise. So when I, when I reached out to them in preparation for this, they sort of had that data right, right available because they've been working at it over the, the last few months. And so I'm, I'm not sure the timing of her, her app or request, but, but that is why this data was readily available for us is because we've really been, this has been an issue that we need to make sure we have our hands around, and so our INT team has been working on it. Mr. Geiger, I, I know your, your main question is really, what is time-sensitive about these items? And I think the mayor touched on the, obviously, you mentioned the demolitions is, is very time-sensitive, but the mayor touched on things like the planning for the Dream Center and the pre-K centers. We have construction timelines that we want to make sure we meet, and if we want to even think about breaking ground on the Dream Center next year, we really need to get those conversations started. And, and as the mayor said, every week that passes truly does make a difference in terms of when we are going to be able to get these, these conversations going and to be able to have the, the level of engagement that we want. And so that's that. On the utility relief side, we know that the, the funds are needed in, in the utilities to replace lost revenue that is either from higher-than-average outstanding AR on the debt relief side or just delaying the implementation of, of a rate increase to try and make sure that, that residents don't, are, aren't negatively impacted. Obviously, on the COVID response and the COVID facilities upgrade, same thing, the COVID response, that's money that has already been spent by the city, and, and we are trying to reimburse ourselves for that. And, and on the COVID facilities upgrade, the timing of getting those upgrades going so that we can implement those as quickly as possible and start to have people back in those facilities in a, in a safe way is, is really critical. So all of them do have a time component, and, and that's, that's, that's why they're in the bill. In terms of the, the other items from Mr. Geiger, the, the streamlined assistance, I know that, that what you said about the lead program is, is it the perfect example of why this, this money is needed? Is that we want to make this, these mon, these dollars available for, for people who qualify for them. We want to make it easier for people to sign up and to have access to these funds. And so the utilization of that $100,000 is to really do a study of how we can make things easier to access, whether it's, it's city programs like the lead program, the home repair program, the customer assistance program, or whether it's external to the city, all the programs that Denise talked about in the committee this afternoon. It's, it's a great spend of dollars, and it can allow us to leverage a, a lot of the programs that are out there and really amplify their effect. So I, I hope I caught most of them.
The collaboration piece, what Black organizations, entities, stakeholders, who are you collaborating with?
Yeah, thank you. The, I, Laura, I think you were on, and, and actually, Ms. Benicki, you had a question for, on the, on the operation of the childcare centers as well. So on the operation piece from, from Ms. Benicki, obviously, United Way will, will be the partner on the operations side. And then on the collaboration with, with other local providers, is there anything that, that you want to speak to on the, on the childcare side from that perspective as well?
Yeah, so, so very quickly, United Way is assuming full responsibility for the centers, and so all of the liability would fall on us. And that's something that we are, are willing to do and, and feeling like we need to do. In terms of collaboration, we are actually in partnership with the city. We just launched our second round of capacity building grants. And so the goal of that is to help increase the number of high-quality childcare providers within city limits. And high quality is a rating system that is known as Indiana Past Equality. It's set by the state. It's out of four with levels three and four being considered high quality. The goal of the grant is to help out providers either obtain or maintain licensing within the state of Indiana as well as begin moving up the quality levels in the state's rating system. So we have 30 applications that we are currently reviewing. Of those 30, we have 17 that have come from home providers and, or 18 that have come from home providers, and 17 of those are owned by minorities, and we are working very hard to work with them to identify what they need to be able to move up that quality system because with that comes additional funding from the state. And so we're kind of coming at it from all angles, as well as from a professional development standpoint. We just launched our CDA program, again, in partnership with the city. The CDA is a Child Development Associate. It's the bare minimum that you need to teach in a licensed program, whether it's a home, a center, or a ministry. And again, focusing on those individuals that have been in the field for a very long time but do not have that credential. And so by offering it in a non-formal setting, it's being offered actually at our office tonight, actually, is one of the nights. It's a 40-week program, to be able to allow them to get that credential, become licensed, and do so in a non-traditional setting because we know that, you know, that's, that's not an option that is available or of interest. But it's, again, something that we're doing to help everyone obtain the highest level of quality that, that we can. So, and then the added layer, again, is, is that partnership with Head Start. So we're trying to do the best we can to support as many different providers as we can within the city.
Yeah, I appreciate it. The question is for the city administration to say how it's leveraging its dollars? So for example, vacant building, development financing? Are you working?
Excuse me, Mr. Geiger.
I'm just clarifying the question so I can get an answer.
If you could maybe email that because this part isn't open for dialogue. You asked the questions. We did give you the allotted time, and we did have a rebuttal. So I, I really don't, I, I just don't want to set a precedence. It's not fair to everyone. Is that correct, Mr. Palmer?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I got a question. She was incorrectly answering the question that he asked.
Right.
And so she answered something that he did not ask. So he was trying to clarify what he was asking. So that's not setting a precedent, that's in clarification.
Okay.
So she didn't answer the question.
And I believe that the question had to do with equity into the pre-K centers?
No, it was generally about collaborations and this, and this funding, this money that we're looking at overall.
I believe that she answered the question in the best of her ability, and I have been timing everyone to see if I'm keeping everybody on some type of timeframe. So, Mr. Geiger, would you mind at this point perhaps just sending those, emailing those questions to Mr. Parker so that you can get an answer?
I mean, it's a little too late, but sure.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. And I do see, I don't believe I closed the public hearing. I, I was going to say, do you see the one hand? Okay.
One minute seven seconds.
Yeah, yeah, I do see one hand, and it looks like, and I don't believe I had closed the public hearing yet, but I did ask for the rebuttal for Mr. Parker on the two previous speakers. So at this time, it looks like Regina Preston-Williams has her hand up, and I'm guessing it's to speak in opposition. And in that, I didn't close, it was just the rebuttal period. Sometimes I get lost, and we have a lot of dialogue sometimes. So thank you, Attorney Palmer. Please state your name and address.
Thank you. My name's Regina Williams-Preston, 838 North Elmer Street, South Bend, Indiana. I wanted to offer a recommendation. I am speaking in, I'm actually speaking against passings tonight. I don't think that it's too much to suggest, as Councilman Davis did, just two additional weeks. In fact, I heard Mr. Parker make the point that part of his urgency was to get, move forward for additional engagement. I think it's, it's prudent to actually have the engagement before we move forward. And so I would just like to offer an recommendation. A few years ago, we had, in 2017, we commissioned a study, the Racial Wealth Divide Report. And there are 10 questions for policy development, review, and evaluation that really get at this issue of equity. It was mentioned, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to distribute resources, and if we're truly interested in doing that equitably, I would recommend that we take that additional two weeks and spend that time answering those 10 questions. I'll read them here now, but you all have access, I would assume, to the report, and it's on page eight. Gets right at that question of equity. Number one, how is an equity lens incorporated within the policy? Two, does the policy explicitly account for potentially racially disparate outcomes? If so, how? If not, how can it be incorporated? Three, how is an equity lens incorporated in tracking policy outcomes? That gets at the issue of accountability. Four, will the policy increase access and opportunity for communities of color? And how? Number five, will the policy have a positive impact on racial and ethnic equity, inclusion, and full participation of all people in the process in implementation, in breadth of outreach and participation, in decision-making and culture of decision-making? Six, will the policy protect against discrimination? Six, will the policy protect against discrimination? How? Number seven, what are the mechanisms in place to ensure accountability, such as equity-focused benchmarks or indicators? Number eight, do the lens and tools for accountability incorporate a racial equity framework? How? Number nine, are there changes that could be made to make the policy more equitable and inclusive? And number 10, what are the economic and social benefits of incorporating an equity lens in this policy? So I bring this to your attention, back to the forefront of your consciousness, because when we do these studies and reports, and we get information and recommendations from the experts that we paid, I think it's really wise to actually take the time to do those things. And so those 10 questions, again, I would recommend that we take some time, these next two weeks, to actually specifically go through those 10 questions and make sure that all of the ways that we are looking to spend these dollars actually answer those questions in a way, or that we put things in place that we can say definitively that we are addressing this issue, whatever those issues are, with an equity lens. So that's my recommendation. Also, Ms. Jensen, I think it was, I am curious about the childcare centers. I'm an educator, so I'm very interested in the work that you are doing. You mentioned that you are working with, I think it was something like 17 of these early childhood or daycare programs, and only, like, I think it was 16 of them, I don't remember the exact numbers, were minorities. I'm curious to know, are those racial minorities? And specifically, how many are Black? How many are Hispanic or Latino? Because that's important, because when we look at the Racial Wealth Divide Report, we see that here in South Bend locally, specifically African-Americans are those, oh, perfect, because I'm almost done, that African-Americans are really at the bottom and far apart from not just white folks, but even, in many cases, the Latino population. So I'm interested in that. So thank you.
Thank you, Regina. Thank you for your comments. We did go through a rebuttal period, but at this time, I guess I would ask if Mr. Parker or Mrs. Jensen would like to answer any other questions that Ms. Williams just presented? Or would you just want to correspond through email? Mrs. Jensen, are you still there?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't have my.
That's okay.
But. I'm sorry, what?
So.
I was gonna say, or possibly wait two weeks and spend some time having more conversation.
Yeah, I'm happily happy, Regina, to connect with you directly, as well as bring in Emily Ruchek on my team, who's our Director of Early Learning Partnerships and has overseen the grant program. I can, we can walk you through in depth, you know, the program and what our goal is, if that works for you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jensen. Is that the end of your comments? Okay, thank you. Okay, everyone.
Any comment from the city about the questions?
Mr. Parker, do you want to have a rebuttal?
Sure, yes. Hi, Regina, thank you. So, yes, obviously, those questions are always at the forefront of how we design programs and always in the background of the implementation of those programs. So it's always important to keep those in mind, and the racial wealth divide. So appreciate you bringing those up. I don't know if there was a specific question in terms of, you know, the implementation of these programs, but obviously, as these programs get implemented, it'd be important to assess how each one of those 10 questions is being addressed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Parker. Okay, at this time, I do not see anybody else online. Clerk Jones, could you confirm that for me, just because I don't see anybody, just in case I didn't miss anybody? I don't want to leave anyone out.
You are correct. There is no one else online expressing interest to speak on this issue.
Okay, thank you so much for that clarification. Then at this time, I am going to, I'll close the public hearing on substitute bill 116.21. So at this time, council members, do you wish to make any statements? Councilman Davis?
Sure. Last Friday, I happened to visit or be a part of a meeting, and the meeting was about redistricting. And within the context of that meeting, there was discussions about the amount of people who are apathetic towards the democratic process. And within that democratic process, people are so apathetic that they don't participate in our given right as Americans, our constitutional right of voting, the success of voting. That success of voting has been, in some way or shape or form, has been overshadowed because of the apathy of many of the residents in the state of Indiana. More importantly, those who are part of the D side of the aisle. The conversation kept going, and there was some information that was given from Ms. Cheryl Ash, and what took so long to get a food stamp bill passed downstate for folks who were previously incarcerated. And the conversation grew some more about, you know, how do we get people more interested in participating, so we don't have this gerrymandering problem? I raised my hand, and I got up, and I thought I was being very smart, and I offered. I said, people don't feel or see of any value in voting, because they don't get a return on their vote. People do not participate because they don't see any value, because every time they go to a poll booth to vote a candidate in, that candidate, for some odd strange reason, tends to go the way of the status quo, or their reality or atmosphere doesn't change. And none of this is immediate, we get that, you know, no one has a badge of wine, but no one's stupid either. No one's tone deaf. People, you know, pay attention, they watch. And I caution the people that were in the room to just looking at the issues of what was in front of them, which was the map, but dig a little bit deeper past the surface to discover why people are apathetic, why people don't want to participate, why, why, and why. And just give me a couple more seconds. And the reason why is because these sorts of things just don't work out for them, and that's the majority of the public. Doesn't matter if you're Black or you're white. It's just not working out, you know? People get in, participate in the process, and somebody say, hey, hold, slow, pump the brakes. Oh, we gotta do it right now. And you're lobbying millions of dollars just on the table. Somebody say, give it a couple more weeks. No, we can't do that, we can't do that. Now, these are the same people that voted you into office. They're asking you to slow down, more information, more information. So we're more comfortable with what you're doing, because we put you in the office, and also, we're paying you to do this with our money. But for some reason, that gets lost in the transference of conversation. So, you know, as we go through this, you know, I've already made my piece with what has happened, and I hope that we can still delay a couple more weeks, but that's the truth. That's why we have the issues that we have here in America, but more importantly, in South Bend, Indiana. People don't find value in it, because the power structure has forgotten why they were there, we're servants first.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Is there any other council statements? Councilwoman Hammond?
Thank you. As I'm reviewing this, the question I had about the facilities, and I have no idea where I came up with 200,000, but it's actually 1.7 million. I'm just wondering if we've looked at the other community centers that are frequented by, I mean, I'm thinking of the Charles Black Center, where a lot of the youth play basketball and such, do they have these same COVID precautions built into that facility? Have we taken on that expense for these other locations? And to my knowledge, we have not. So in light of the comment from Regina, I don't know that we really are implementing those 10 questions very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other council members that wish to make a statement? Okay, seeing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion regarding.
I'd like to make a recommendation that 1116-21 be suspended for two weeks.
There has been a motion on the floor? I do not hear a second. So the motion is gonna die? Is there any other motions regarding substitute bill 116-21?
I'd like to move that bill 116-21 be moved for, be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
There has been a motion regarding bill 116-21 to be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation and duly seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll call?
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
If I cannot get the guarantee on the 3.5 tonight, I'm gonna have to say nay.
President White?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Bill number 116-21 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. We're gonna get to the next bill, which is bill number 117-21. Clerk Jones, could you please give that bill a second reading?
Yes. 117-21, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Appropriating, Adopting, and Approving the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation's 2022 Budget and Levying the Tax and Fixing the Rate of the Taxation for the Purpose of Raising Revenue to Fund the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation, South Bend, Indiana, for the Fiscal Year Ending December 31, 2022.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair, this bill was heard by personnel and finance and comes to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman Warner. Is the petitioner present, which I see she is?
Yes, good evening. Amy Hill, General Manager and CEO with Transpo, offices located at 1401 South Lafayette Boulevard in South Bend. Certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here again tonight. Just a quick overview, Transpo currently operates as the public transportation agency serving the cities of South Bend and Mishawaka. We have approximately 115 employees, with the majority of those being members of the Amalgamated Transit Union. We have about 24 administrative staff members. We provide both fixed route bus service and the paratransit access service as well. As we take a look at 2021, we've been mainly focused on our fleet replacement program for the last several years. We were able to add additional nine CNG compressed natural gas buses to our fleet. Those were utilized by purchasing with federal grant dollars, competitive grant dollars on both the federal and state level. Those were at no out-of-pocket cost to Transpo. So that brings up our compressed natural gas fleet to 31 buses. That does leave us with 20 aging diesel buses that are currently eligible for replacement. The useful life of a bus is 12 years, and these are currently 18 to 20 years old. Our board just last week approved moving forward with the purchase of another eight compressed natural gas buses due to additional grant funding that we were able to secure. We've been able to bring our paratransit fleet up to date for the first time in years, so we are in compliance with our transit asset management plan, which is required by the FTA. Some other big accomplishments over the last year, we did receive a COVID-19 research demonstration grant, which allowed us to implement mobile ticketing and able to remove some of that contact between the passengers and fare boxes and operators. So that is a two-year program that we're doing in partnership with MACOG and the Inner Urban Trolley. We completed our strategic plan, and we are working on the implementation, which includes several technology upgrades as a result of the technology assessment we completed. Have also been focused on professional development and additional training for our staff members. We have just launched the first-ever regional comprehensive operational analysis in partnership with MACOG. For the first time, that will be looking at public transportation throughout our region as a whole, so we're excited to move forward with that process. There will be plenty of opportunity for public engagement, so the council will be hearing more from us as we move forward with that part of the process. We've continued to expand our ridership programs. We work with a lot of area colleges, universities, have expanded our relationship with South Bend Community School Corporation, School City of Mishawaka, Purdue Polytechnic High School, as well as the City of South Bend's Ride Guarantee Program. COVID-19, dramatic impact for us, as with many other organizations throughout our community. We did see a dramatic decline in ridership in March 2020. Not that there's ever a good time for a pandemic, but leading up to that, we had saw five months of increased ridership, which we hadn't seen in years. A lot of that attributed to the expansion of some of our ridership programs. At our worst, we were down about 80% ridership. We did go down to a reduced service schedule for three months last summer. However, we were able to keep all our staff employed and did not lay off or furlough any employees. We finished the year down about 46% and 48% for our fixed route and paratransit ridership. To date, we're still down about 40% compared to our pre-COVID numbers. That ridership's coming back slowly. As with any organization, we've had to implement additional safety measures, including enhanced cleaning, disinfecting, making sure that we have PPE available for our employees and passengers. We've added protective barriers to our buses and hand sanitizing dispensers to our vehicles and stations. Our federal mask mandate does continue through January 18 of 2022. We wouldn't have been able to get through COVID without our COVID-19 relief funding. That is the main reason we were able to go back to a full service schedule after just three months of operating a reduced service schedule. Many transit agencies across the country are still operating at reduced levels and still have employees that have been furloughed or laid off. So we are very proud of the fact that we are able to keep everyone working, and that's really due to the COVID-19, the CARES Act, the Payroll Protection Plan, and then also the American Rescue Plan funding that we received. As we look at our budget for 2022, we're looking at a total of $11,293,242. Broken down here, you can see the large majority comes from local tax revenue, which is made up of property taxes, which is starting to level out now a little bit after the circuit breaker impact of last year. Excise tax, which has been relatively flat, and then the local income tax. We are looking at a loss of $189,000 heading into 2022 for the funds that are being reallocated towards the 911 call center. While that may not seem like a lot of money when you're looking at an $11 million budget, that is equivalent of one and a half payrolls or the reduction of one to two bus routes. So as we go into our comprehensive operational analysis, we will have to take that into consideration. On the state level, the state of Indiana has the Public Mass Transportation Fund. It is a line item in the state's budget. It's been locked in at about 45 million for years. There has not been any significant increase. In fact, in 2021, they did withhold 15% of that due to COVID-19. We are seeing our numbers come back, but again, there hasn't been a significant increase in years there. That fund does fund all public transportation agencies throughout the state of Indiana. We receive federal operating assistance for our daily operations, as well as for preventative maintenance. And then our passenger fares are certainly down as ridership continues to be down. I think it's important to point out that we've kept our fares as low as we can. It costs a dollar to ride the bus. That ride costs us between $4 and $5 to provide. With ridership being down, you see that cost go up a little bit due to the fact that when we're operating a bus, whether there's one person on it or 20 people on it, it's the same cost. Our access service is a little more challenging. We can charge double the fare, so $2 per ride, and that costs us closer to $20 to provide. Our lease revenue, we own one remaining parking garage in the city of South Bend that is leased back to the city. That lease continues through 2025. And then our advertising revenue. And then our advertising revenue, the majority of that is our interior and exterior advertising on our vehicles, which has remained strong throughout COVID, so that's been good. When we look at the expense side, you can see that the majority of our expenses are fixed, mainly made up of wages and benefits, which is just over 80%. We are anticipating a slight increase in employee expenses, mainly due to insurance. We'll also be negotiating our fixed route and maintenance contract next summer. We just reached a tentative agreement with our paratransit contract this year. Our fuel expenses remain pretty steady. Actually, we'll see that go down as additional compressed natural gas vehicles are added to our fleet. Compressed natural gas does still remain a competitive option for us. We complete a green fleet audit every couple of years that looks at our current fuel usage, as well as alternative fuel options out there. And again, CNG remains the most competitive at this time. Utilities and insurance have remained pretty steady. Services, our materials and supplies from a maintenance perspective have been pretty steady as well. When we look at overall operating expenses, you can see the dramatic decrease in 2020, and that's directly related to COVID-19. The fact that we did go down to a reduced service schedule, we were able to operate with fewer overtime hours, we are seeing that come back in 2021 and getting back to those normal pre-COVID numbers heading into 2022. On the labor side, again, same thing. We had a dramatic decrease in 2020, and we're now heading back up to more normal levels. We are making some adjustments, like many transit agencies. We are facing an operator shortage. We are hiring from multiple positions. Traditionally, Transpo has hired in individuals at a part-time before moving up to full-time. We've now added additional full-time positions to help with the recruitment. When you work as a part-time operator, everything is seniority-based, so your schedule can be very unpredictable. It can get be difficult to get people in the door, so we're hoping moving to more full-time positions will help us in the long run. Again, and just to touch on the local income tax, $189,000 does not sound like a lot. It is a significant decrease for us, and we will have to take that into consideration as we move into 2022. Challenges, you know, I already mentioned our aging fleets. Again, we'll see that number of 20 buses. We're able to purchase another eight CNG buses. Total cost is around $4.2 million, but thanks to federal and state grants, we have secured our out-of-pocket cost for those buses will be between $50,000 and $60,000. So that will leave us with 12. We'll be working on securing some additional competitive federal grants to move forward with that. Our funding, it's always a challenge. Again, the local income tax on the local level is the perfect example of that insecurity with the Indiana Public Mask Transportation Fund. There really needs to be more investment in public transportation on the state level, and certainly long-term federal funding for public transportation. Current administration is very supportive of public transportation. We're still not where those, not sure where those dollars will fall, but something that we're closely watching. And again, our employee expenses continue to go up with the rising cost of insurance and benefits. Opportunities, I briefly mentioned our strategic plan implementation. We're excited to move forward with that, really focusing on engaging our employees, moving forward with a comprehensive operational analysis. Again, partnering with MACOG for that, they've actually allocated a portion of their CARES Act dollars to cover the cost of that. We are working with Jarrett Walker &amp; Associates, who they're known internationally for their work in public transportation. They have an entirely separate public engagement team, so we will be focused on engaging all parts of our community. As I mentioned during the committee meeting as well, we'll be looking to council members to engage in each of your districts as well as that moves forward. We continue to look at opportunities to partner with other organizations, help to bridge the gap with getting individuals to work school and other resources, and certainly focus on our recruiting efforts for hiring employees moving forward. We've been very fortunate to have a lot of employees that have been with Transpo 20, 30, 40 years. Many of those employees are retiring in the next three to five years, so we need to start looking at that next generation of bus operators, maintenance staff. You know, we're very fortunate that it is a great place to work. We are working on improving our starting wages. Our drivers continue at the top level to be the top paid bus drivers in the state of Indiana, but the starting pay doesn't need to work, so we recognize that heading into negotiations for next year. So that is a very brief overview of our budget. I would certainly be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Is there any council members here that have a question for Ms. for Amy? Councilwoman Hammond?
Thank you, Chair. Amy, I just want to thank you for the presentation. I do sit on the Transpo Board, and I am always impressed with how professionally the whole organization is run and the efforts that you make to try and find grant funding and how focused you are in making sure that Transpo is up and running at full capacity at all times. And I just want to thank you for all the efforts you make.
Thank you.
Any other council members have a question? Councilwoman Lee?
I just, again, want to thank Amy for her presentation, and we're always looking for, to see how, one of the things that I deal with people in employing, getting them employed, and, you know, our biggest challenge is, you know, really great jobs in Elkhart, but the bus line only goes so far. And so really would love to see if we can extend that and be able to get people from South Bend to Elkhart so that they can work and make a decent wage, so.
Thank you. That's definitely a priority. We do have our jointly operated yellow line with MACOG. We can get you there, it's just not going to be most convenient, and it's probably going to take you about two hours from the west side of South Bend to get to downtown Elkhart. We actually just applied for a joint grant with MACOG again to look at, to receive funding for a feasibility study to look at how we improve that, whether it's bus rapid transit or more direct express route to make those connections to the employment opportunities.
Thank you. Would love to see that happen.
Okay, if I do not see any other council members having any questions at this time, we're going to move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of Bill number 117-21? I don't see anyone online, is that correct, Clerk Jones?
That is correct. There is no one online expressing interest to speak in favor?
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the bill?
There is no one online wishing to speak in opposition to this bill.
And I see no one present speaking in opposition. So at this point, the public hearing on Bill 117-21 is now closed. Council members, do you have any statements you wish to make regarding the bill? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion regarding Bill 117-21.
I'd like to move Bill 117-21 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
There has been a motion made, and it has been duly seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Bill 117-21 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. We are going to move on to Bill number 118-21. Clerk Jones, could you please give the bill a second reading?
Yes. 118-21, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, levying taxes and fixing the rate of taxation for the purpose of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of the civil city of South Bend for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, and appropriating monies for the purpose of defraying the expenses of the city of South Bend, Indiana for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2022, and ending December 31, 2022, including all outstanding claims and obligations, and fixing a time when the same shall take effect.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair, this comes out of the Personnel and Finance Committee with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman Warner. Is the petitioner present? Mr., oh, there you are. I didn't think you'd leave yet.
Wouldn't miss it, Chair.
No.
So yes, this is the, thank you, Chair, Dan Parker, City Controller. My office is on the 12th floor of the county city building. So this is the public hearing of the 2022 budget. So what the bill before you does is levy the property tax for 2022 and appropriates the 2022 budget. A couple kind of housekeeping notes, and then let the mayor come up and we'll begin the presentation. The budget, as we talked about earlier, the budget numbers that you see in the bill are the advertised numbers, and so we always advertise high, and then we bring down, back down to the numbers that'll be adopted in the final bill. So there will be a substitute version of this bill based on feedback. We've also built in some cushion for the results of negotiations and those kinds of things in the advertised numbers. So just a note on that. I did also want to mention where we've been. This has been the 2022 budget process, so I think we're 11 meetings in, and we have at least tonight's and then two more to go, at least, before the vote goes. Or the first opportunity for the vote to go would be October 11. So this is where we've been, and then tonight is the only one of these 14 meetings that's actually required by state law, which is the public hearing of the 2022 budget. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to Mayor Mueller to talk through the first part of the 2022 budget presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Good evening again, Council. Mayor James Mueller with offices on the 14th floor of this building. And just want to start out by saying that I hope that this is the most exciting budget process that we've had, especially for those who've been on the council for a long time. It should be exciting because of the historic resources we're receiving from the federal government that open up the opportunities that we haven't had in the past. And knowing that we're at this critical moment with historic resources, we've tried to work with you and the community to get the most input as possible. To be honest, it is still very difficult to get people excited about a budget. So I'm glad for all those who've joined us here tonight in person and online, because, you know, the wheel game you see in the bottom right there, that was popular at some of the events, but without the wheel, it's still a struggle, even with these historic resources that get people really fired up about the budget. But nevertheless, we've been able to collect through the different avenues of feedback about 807 total resident engagements on the budget, and you see the breakdown by district there. Now, of course, that represents less than 1% of the, of our population in the city, but, you know, we feel, you know, there's obviously some niche groups that really started to come together and push a particular thing that may not be representative of broader priorities in the community. But by and large, we do think that the engagement that we had here is representative in many ways of what the community is looking for out of this budget. So there you see eight times as many engagements as last year. So with that, I believe you received a copy of the summary report of the Build the Budget Engagement process, and that's available for members of the public on the city website at southbendin.gov/budget. And it just goes through the different priorities, what the outcomes were by this resident feedback. Again, you can say this was an unscientific collection of feedback from residents, it's less than 1%, but a lot of the priorities that were identified through this process are the same that we do find in the scientific polling we do every two years in the city survey. That's significantly, statistically significant to the council-district level. And it's also consistent with other polling sources of city priorities from residents that I've seen as well. So, you know, this is, when you look at that report, it's not scientific, but it is as representative of the community as, you know, we have at this point. So we're here to work on this budget and take advantage of this general, generational opportunity for transformation. And we know that here are the six priorities that we've come, converged on together over time as the top priorities, both from the resident feedback, the council feedback, and the administration as well. We also know that, you know, on the bottom part of the slide, where we are and where we sit as a city, the economy is expanding again. We're a growing city again, the first time in many decades, to this level anyway. We still have low interest rates and healthy reserves, so we have flexibility to take advantage of opportunities. And we do expect that there will be more opportunities in the next two years than even all of these historic things we're talking about with ARP dollars and other things, because we hope Congress will pass an infrastructure bill. We hope they'll pass the Families Plan, or whatever it's called now, the Reconciliation Bill, I guess, with a nondescripter name. And we know there are some state resources coming down as well that we'll be taking advantage of. But with interest rates being low, having a good bond rating and room to borrow more, and having healthy reserves available to us, we hope to take advantage of as many of these funding opportunities as possible, and do expect to see more, more good projects than even what we're proposing in the 2022 budget thus far. So just to put into perspective, particularly with the previous conversation, is just, our total budget is just over $380 million. Much of that is spoken for in terms of just keeping the lights on or fulfilling statutory requirement, federal, state, or local. And then $76 million or thereabouts is the strategic spending. And this is our sustainable operational budgets outside of the ARP. So when you look at operations and initiatives, putting up the local dollars supported, and then you put the ARP dollars available to us in perspective, it's almost a year's worth of initiatives in a typical year. I'm going to wait for Dan, I'm going to step back and let Dan go through the details of the presentation, and just want to give a few highlights of what the budget has. So first, you know, we could give a big pitch about everything that's good in the budget and all the high-level pieces, and, but I'm not going to do that tonight. I know you guys have been digging into the budget over the past few weeks, and we'll have continued conversations as we go forward in the process. I think everyone recognized, I think even people, you know, people who may have concerns about this or that, I think most people recognize that this is already, before we continue our work together, already the best budget that we've put forth, and I think it'll be even better as we continue to talk about it and engage about it. And that's whether you're talking about investments in historically underserved neighborhoods. I will note that the ARP dollars that were just in the 2021, we're contemplating major investments in neighborhoods that haven't seen a lot of investment over the years. So whether we're talking about the community center in the far northwest neighborhood, or we're talking about a big project with the Dream Center in that neighborhood. So, you know, we're already expanding what we're offering here because of these resources that we haven't had available. So whether you're talking about that, whether you're talking about infrastructure, we know there are more dollars for infrastructure than we've had at least any time since I've been working in the city. So you go down the list, we know because of these resources, this is already going to be the best budget for a lot of different things. And the question is going to be, you know, more on the margin. We know that these line up, the budget lines up with the priorities we got from residents. Dan's going to go through the details in a minute about how they line up with council members' priorities that you gave us. This is your budget, this is the community's budget, just as much as it's the administration's budget already. And we'll continue to fine-tune it in the next couple of weeks, but we're already there. Now, I know everyone, and when you look at the resident feedback, you're going to be able to look at districts change, that districts have different priorities, we get that, there are different realities in each district. We also know council members have different priorities. And I'm not sure that, you know, if we had to rank every priority, you know, from one to whatever, I'm not sure that any two of you would necessarily agree with the exact order of that. And so we know this process is a compromise from all involved, and that's what we're trying to do. And, you know, we think, you know, you look at the resident engagement, you look at the all, your council members, not just your own, look at your fellow council members, how do you get a broad coalition on board? Look at their priorities too, not just yours. We're honing in on that compromise. And so again, there could be some tweaks, there'll be some things to work on, but at the end of the day, we've got nine council members, we've got 103 residents of the city, and so that's what we're balancing, and we're trying to deliver the best for them. So that's, you know, I feel pretty good about where- So that's, uh, you know, I feel pretty good about where the budget is. I, I know there are issues and some questions and this year in particular, because there are so many things going on, it took a little longer to get through just the, the presentation phase, so we haven't had, uh, a- as much, uh, ability to go back and forth because we were still just trying to present all of the things, uh, being proposed. But, uh, nevertheless, I think, uh, this is gonna be, I, I hope the next few weeks are, are exciting for everyone because once we start moving forward, then the hard work really begins. We're, you know, we've gotta, this is an ambitious proposal that's before us. This is, like we said, almost double the strategic initiatives. We're gonna, we're gonna have to work to deploy these resources in the community. And so, you know, on, on the staffing and the operation side, it's a balance between long-term sustainability and getting these resources out to the community as quickly as possible. Uh, so there are those balances, there's short-term and long-term, uh, considerations that, that we have to take. So take the pre-K centers, there's a long-term benefit that, that, uh, those offer, there's also short-term benefits as well as, as some of the, uh, spending that we're proposing to, to confront, uh, climate change here on the local level. A lot of the energy policies controlled at the state level, but we think we can make meaningful progress here with, with some of these dollars o- on those programs. So, uh, this is, uh, this is exciting. I think, like I said, we're not, I'm not gonna go through the whole list and all the highlights because we're 100, we're a city of 103,000 and, you know, I, I appreciate each and every one who, who sits through these council meetings, uh, with us each and every week, but I know they've been here throughout the whole process. Everyone knows what's in, everyone knows what's in, roughly what's in the budget and why it's so great. We need to go out to the community and share how this budget is so great and I welcome any council member who will be given invitations to come out with us to share all of the good things in this budget and really unite the community around, uh, our future, our shared future together. So with that, I will turn it over to Dan to go through the, uh, details, uh, once again, or at least the summary of the details and look forward to working with all of you and community members as we, uh, move through the process.
Thank you, Mayor Mueller. Appreciate your comments. Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mayor. Um, one, one comment that I did want to make just before I get into the high-level, uh, summary of some of the, the spending highlights in the budget, um, is, is that there's been, there's been comments about some operational costs that are, are proposed to be increased, uh, in the 2022 budget. Um, and, and we've talked about how this historic investment, this doubling in, of initiatives and, and the potential for future, uh, uh, investments from the, from the state or federal government as well. There's really a need to operationalize that investment, right? There's, there's a need to operationalize the programs. You can see, uh, from, from the numbers here, if you look at just the operations, uh, of, of the folks who will be operationalizing these dollars in the strategic operations, um, the, the, from 2020 to 2022, uh, there, there was a 2.6% increase in, in that cost, um, compared to 131% percent increase in the strategic initiative costs. Um, another way to look at this is that the operational cost increase is only 4.8% of the total cost increase, uh, of these strategic initiatives. So it's, 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 it's almost an effective overhead rate of the implementation of these programs. And I think, um, certainly from my perspective, and I think anybody who has familiarity with the, the oper- operationalizing programs would, would agree that 4.8% overhead is a pretty good and efficient way to, to operationalize these things. And so, uh, as we look at expanding things like community investment and the Office of Community Initiatives and those things, that's the reason we're doing that, is to try and really make sure that this money gets out into the community. Um, and so I did want to just keep that in mind, uh, a- as, as we go through some of, some of the, the, uh, uh, initiatives. So, uh, again, looking back to, um, initial conversations around the budget, we, the first thing we always start with is cash reserves and revenues. Um, and so you can see on the far right, the proposed revenues. Um, I'm not gonna go line by line, uh, but, uh, definitely s- some, uh, some increases that we're expecting, uh, in, in 2022 in a variety of, of different areas, but also some, some decreases. Um, and total revenues are expected around $355.5 million, uh, in 2022. The, those of you who are paying attention over the past few slides probably recognized that, uh, and we talked about this in the, in the budget initial as well, that total revenue, uh, of $355.5 million and total expenditures of $381.9 million means is that we have a, a deficit budget in front of us of about $26.4 million overall. Um, as we've talked about in the past, that deficit is driven primarily by about a $6.3 million deficit in the General Plus Funds. And so the General Plus Funds is our general fund plus our income tax funds. Um, and so that's kind of the general operations of the government. It's police, fire, community investment, code enforcement, um, administration, sort of the core governmental operations. It has a $6.3 million deficit i- in, in the 2022 proposed budget. Um, as we've talked about a few times, on the structural side especially, we are still looking to get to a, a balanced budget over the next three years or so. Um, that is why, one of the reasons why we've, uh, really taken pains to try and separate out the structural budget from the, the ARP-related budget, um, o- over the course of the past 11 budget hearings, um, is, is because we want to make sure that we are not, uh, overextending that structural budget and we do have a glide path towards balanced budget. That being said, in the General Plus Funds, we do have healthy reserves and we can, um, in the short term withstand, uh, the deficit here. Again, to try and make sure we're getting those dollars out into the community, uh, where they're needed. Uh, the other, the other parts of the deficit is primarily driven by water and wastewater, especially on the capital side. Um, the way that the capital for, for water and wastewater works is these projects take a very long time, um, to kind of operationalize. Um, and so we, we, uh, appropriate them all at once on the capital side and so they may take several years to actually, uh, come to fulfillment. Um, but, so it looks like a, a large spend down in, in a single year, whereas it may actually be spread over a, a number of years. Uh, and that is all according to the plan that was presented to council, uh, during the raids package. Um, and then there is also a $2.7 million internal fund spend down, internal service fund spend down. Our internal service funds are things like our, uh, central services fund, our health insurance fund. We don't intend to keep, uh, dollars in those funds, um, in the most, in most cases. Certain cases, we, we have a, a minimum reserve, but we don't really like to keep too much above that. Um, and so when we do have expenditures that don't, uh, aren't as high as revenues in those funds, um, in future years, we, we, we true that up a little bit by having a deficit and that's what we see here. So that's what makes up the primary amount of, of, of the deficit in the 2022 proposed budget. Um, as the mayor said, I just want to run quickly through, um, some budget highlights and spending highlights. All of these things have been presented over the course of, of the budget hearings. Um, and as we've been presenting, as council members know, we have really been tying each one of the initiatives to the feedback that we receive from the residents in the Build the Budget sessions. And we put up the graph that shows here were the, the spending priorities of residents. What we haven't done as much is, is, is really tie the, the initiatives back to what council members, what you yourselves told us, uh, you wanted to see in the 2022 budget. Um, and, and so to, to just kind of run through those, um, if, if we start with strong neighborhoods and look at affordable housing, on the left side are, are direct quotes from, from council members on what, what you wanted to see in the 2022 budget. So, uh, an expansion of home repair, a plan for, for safe and affordable housing, incentivizing new housing construction, um, and, and incentivizing in, investment in, in aging housing stock. The 2022 budget responds to that. There's a four-fold increase in resources for, for housing compared to 2021. So there's four times as much resources available and we're looking to do exactly what council members suggested, looking at the, the, the issue of affordable housing from all, all sides, looking at access to, to funding for existing home repair, um, also incentivizing the number of new homes by removing barriers to financing, um, and then providing home buying assistance directly to residents, um, and, and continuing to leverage CDBG funding. So really, really responding to th- this issue from a variety of angles to try and attack it. An, an issue as complex as affordable housing needs to, to be responded to at a variety of levels and council recognized that in their, in your priorities, um, and the 2022 budget recognizes that as well. Uh, the neighborhood infrastructure side, uh, a year after year, uh, this is, this is a very prevalent in council priorities, streets, street paving, curbs, sidewalks, lighting, traffic calming, um, y- uh, very important. And, and the 2022 budget, um, in addition to, which I'll talk about in just a second, fully funding the rebuilding our streets initiative for the second year, um, has doubled the amount of spending, uh, as compared to 2021 for lighting, curbs, sidewalks, and traffic calming. Um, and so the, it is a direct response to, we need more lights out in, out in dark areas in the community, we need sidewalks, we need, uh, traffic calming, has been a big, big topic of conversation this year. Double the investment o- on those kinds of neighborhood infrastructures to $5 million in 2022's budget. On the neighborhood planning side, um, the, the council priorities are, um, just addressing challenging neighborhoods. How do we keep our city clean and tidy? How do we upgrade corridors, um, throughout the city, um, Michigan Street, Miami Street, as well as other corridor, corridors? I heard during the budget hearings, Portage, I heard Linden, I heard, um, uh, the, the o- other areas, um, throughout the city, uh, in addition to Lincoln Way and, and Western, for sure. How do we get those upgrades in place? Um, addressing just dilapidated houses, anti-dumping ordinance. Um, so the, the 2022 budget in terms of planning for these neighborhoods is really beginning a two-year investment in our comprehensive city plan, $500,000, uh, from the 2022 budget, uh, and then, uh, a proposed $500,000 w- will be coming back in the 2023 budget to, to really address these things at, at a, at a citywide level, um, and, and really take a, take a big step back and see how they impact, uh, not just each individual neighborhood, but the city as a whole. And then informed by each individual neighborhood plan and the comprehensive plan, um, investing nearly $4 million, which is more money than we've probably invested in the last, uh, 10 years in commercial demolitions, um, to address some, some longstanding concerns in the community. Um, so, uh, the, the Bill 11621, uh, will jumpstart that tonight, uh, in 2021, um, and then 2022 will be an additional nearly $4 million. We're expanding the, the successes of the West Side Main Streets to continue to, to invest in Lincoln Way and Western, but also expanding that to other neighborhood corridors, uh, direct response to, to council priorities and opening up that to, to citywide and investing in some of the neighborhood amenities, um, that, that make those business corridors great. Um, and then exploring the startup, startup of a land bank to really figure out how we can, uh, address not just dilapidated houses, but vacant, vacant lots that are in the community, um, and, and looking, uh, to partner with a community partner, um, on, on a land bank. On the, the second priority of safe community, uh, lots and lots of, of conversation around violence reduction and, and, uh, recruiting and retention at South Bend Police Department. So, uh, ensuring the safety of re- residents by providing necessary resources, reviewing the data on GVI and violent crime reduction, um, really looking at violence sort of from a holistic perspective. And then also looking at our homeless residents, um, and figuring out how we can really implement, have, uh, document and implement a, 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 uh, sustainable plan for addressing homelessness. Um, and so the 2022 budget continues to inv- and expands actually investment in violence intervention programs through the Office of Community Initiatives, both on the operational level by adding to staff members, um, by continuing the investment in the save team, um, and can, and actually expanding the amount of resources available for violence reduction initiatives, uh, through the ARP, the total of all of those being about 1.8 million. Expanding investment into public safety technology to, to help the South Bend Police Department, um, provide new and innovative ways, and South Bend Fire Department provide new and innova- innovative ways to keep, to keep our residents safe. Um, and then on homelessness, um, having a really, actually a historic investment in homelessness, we talked about that in the context of the 2021 budget, that it was an historic investment in homelessness. We're continuing that in the 2022 bu- bu- budget and then adding to it wi- with, uh, proposed partnerships with the county on homelessness and mental health initiatives to take care of everyone, um, in the community. On the infrastructure side, as the mayor said, I don't think that there's been this much money available for infrastructure in many, many years and we hear it again and again. And i- if you've had an opportunity to sort of page through the reports that we handed out at the, at the committee meeting, you've probably noticed, people care about infrastructure. Uh, people care about streets and they want clean water and they want us to, to invest in these things. Um, and so the rebuilding our streets plan is fully funded for the second year in a row. Um, we are, we are fulfilling the promises made to council during the raids, raids package, uh, talks on the water and wastewater side and as well as on the stormwater and continued investment in there. Um, and then a direct response to council, uh, to, to an expressed priority around green infrastructure programs, uh, including investments in, in solar energy and electrical vehicle, uh, charging infrastructure, trying to address some of the impacts of climate change, as the mayor said, on, on the local level. The equitable access to opportunity, um, job creation, additional funds for small local businesses, um, really, uh, just like in every other category, historic invest- and historic investment in job creation and, and small businesses, um, looking to remove barriers for, for financing for small local businesses to the tune of about $3 million. Continuing the investment and, and facilitating opportunities for, for small local, especially local minority and women-owned businesses through the Office of Diversity and Inclusion. Um, and then something that we're really excited about is, uh, ensuring South Bend's a welcoming community. So the mayor mentioned that our community is growing again. One of the ways that we can continue growing, uh, is by being a welcoming community for immigrants and providing support for immigrants, um, to, to settle in our community. And so we want to, uh, to have a fund to provide those resources to immigrants. On the youth and workforce development side, lots of priorities, um, that, that council expressed, funding for the renovation of the Martin Luther King Center, uh, creating opportunities for, for high school graduates to have high-paying jobs, uh, funding for youth development programs. Youth development programs and, and youth, youth employment especially came through again and again, uh, in the council budget priorities. And the 2022 budget responds. Uh, there is continued investment in the youth employment program, which was started two years ago by council, um, within VPA, um, as well as the mentored m- mowing program within VPA. There's also, it, not just on the youth side, but, uh, adult, uh, workforce development as well, um, to, to focus on removing barriers to employment as well as, uh, focus on skills development. So not only focus on developing the skills needed in the workforce, but how do we make, uh, people more employable, um, to, to be able to access some of, some of these jobs that are available? Um, as we just heard, a lot about investing in pre-K centers, um, and, and of quality affordable healthcare, which is a direct response to, to council budget priorities. Um, and then, uh, specifically called out in the council budget priorities was, was, I think actually twice or three times, uh, was the Martin Luther King Center and the complete renovation of that. Um, and, and we talked about that already, uh, yet this evening as well, uh, to jumpstart that in 2021 and then continue that into 2022. And then the last one, uh, this is not one that we actually highlighted during the budget process as much, uh, because it's, it's really more about the way we put the budget together and the way that we operationalize, um, all of these strategic initiatives. So there was count, 2022 council budget priorities around intentionality with the ARP funds, around making sure we're moving towards a balanced budget, uh, around trying to implement participatory budgeting and performance-based budgeting. Um, and then, uh, a lot of discussion around, uh, investing in the, in city employees by, by making sure that we, that city employees earn a living wage. Um, and the 2022 budget, we've talked about it several times, uh, the strong financial management that this council has had over the, the finances of the city over the years has allowed us to be in the position that we're in, where we can take internal resources. We have, uh, we have, uh, these, these, uh, resources on hand to leverage those, those, uh, external investments and amplify the effect of those investments that, that are coming in from ARP and other things. Um, and so that's what this budget is allowing us to do, is to use some of the, the, uh, the cash resources that we have on hand to really amplify that effect. Uh, as I talked about how the, the separation of the ARP budget and the structural budget is really making clear the funding levels that we believe will be sustainable in the long-term, um, as opposed to those that are, that are really, uh, one-time investments. Even if those investments are going to be around for a while, um, will not require ongoing city investment into the future, um, like the establishment of, of loan loss funds and, and those kinds of things. We're also operationalizing the, the investment in the community and we talked about how we're operationalizing, operationalizing that at a very, uh, effective and, and, and efficient rate, uh, uh, from an overhead perspective. Uh, and then on the city, uh, team side, um, nearly a 20% increase in the city's minimum wage, uh, from 10, 10 an hour to $12 an hour, um, and then a move, a, a move of all full-time employees to at least $15 an hour. Um, and then obviously, uh, ongoing negotiations with, with fire and Teamsters to see, um, how those turn out. So there are a few, uh, outstanding items on the 2022 budget despite this being the, uh, the budget hearing. Um, so the completion of those negotiations is one of those outstanding items. As I said, uh, when we, when we advertised the budget, we did, uh, make some room i- in, in the numbers to, to accommodate, uh, whatever the results of those, those negotiations are. But at this point, uh, they, they are in the budget at 0% and so we're awaiting the outcomes, uh, of those. Uh, and then obviously we have at least two more budget hearings, um, uh, on this Thursday and next Tuesday, um, where we will continue to engage with council. On this Thursday, um, the clerk's office and the council itself, uh, will present, uh, those budgets, um, and then we'll continue to, to receive feedback and questions, um, at both of those meetings. Uh, so with that, that is the, the 2022 budget in a nutshell and, um, Chair, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Thank you for your presentation. Council members have any questions over, uh, Bill 118-21? We'll start to my left. Councilwoman Warner, do you have any questions? Councilwoman Hammond?
Just to clarify, the voting on this tonight, it isn't in bills on third reading, so this will come back to us with a substitute bill. so this will come back to us with a substitute bill, and we'll have more engagement around this process, correct?
It's just the public hearing portion?
Yes, that's correct. So, the budget process actually requires a 10-day period between the public hearing and when the vote occurs. So, that we historically have always done it at subsequent council meetings, so we have the public hearing tonight, and then, the third reading would be at the next council meeting on October 11th.
So, any debate needs to happen now?
Yes.
That's why we're having the public, from the public hearing now. Yes.
I'm just confused. I thought we had to vote on different portions of the budget as the salaries and the...
Could you clarify?
That's what I'm asking. That there were two bills that we've heard. One was the trans poll, and then, that was only held for public hearing. And of course, council members could ask questions, but then, it would come back, if I'm not mistaken, in October the 11th, and would be in the council portion only.
That's right.
Because the public hearing has been done. And the one that is before us now, it has an advertising period, that it has to be advertised. So, this is the public hearing. And that doesn't mean we can't ask questions, but basically, it's for the public. Then, it'll come back to the council in the council portion only.
And then, we will have engagement with the substitute bill.
Yes, that's correct.
That's clear. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you, President White. Okay, Councilwoman Tomas Morgan.
Thank you, Chair. I don't have a question. I just have a comment late at the proper time.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, do you have any questions?
I just have a comment. I don't have a question.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Lee? No. Councilwoman McBride?
No, that does not...
President White?
No.
And I do not have any questions at this time either. So, at this time, we will move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of Bill 118-21? And I do not see anyone. Oh.
Good evening. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
My name is David Bugs. I have a building at 3607 South Main Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46614. I have some words in favor and some words against. Can I do that? I haven't been up before you all in a long time.
This would be speaking in favor of the bill?
Okay.
I'm not sure there's anything that would prevent you from coming back and speaking to the opposition of the bill as well. So, I believe you could fulfill both roles.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, here is, this is where I would begin in favor. I heard words that said this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And in this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, we have to act in a manner that's a once-in-a-lifetime event. This pandemic has exposed things in our society that has disproportionately affected the African-American community. I don't say that with any ashamed. We have to recognize that huge elephant in the room. And we have to target the issues that are, have been made very apparent during this process. So, I approve the budget that we're trying to make some headway in making some improvements. But I do think we need to have better focus in understanding all the issues that are present. I'm getting ready to leave out of the country. I was getting my COVID test and listening to this, and we're missing the mark. I love the ideal of building streets, but the streets weren't affected in COVID. People were affected. People died. And I'm gonna come back, I'm gonna talk against, but for, I'm for making sure our people are well-represented in the areas of where this calamity has struck the hardest. I'm not hearing that, but I would really like to hear it. Now, many of you know me, born and raised in South Bend. I was only gone for seven years when I was in the military. I raised my children here. They went to school. My son graduated the same class with Pete and Mayor Mueller. I worked my way without a father to get through Notre Dame, and I purchased a building because this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to help the African-Americans who have suffered, okay? I see a wonderful work with La Casa, and they're helping their people deal with the issues that are pertinent to their people. As a black man who's been here and know all the issues, I know the issues, and I know them better than most because I'm African-American male as well, we have to listen to, I would say, to what I have to say, on ways that we can make this better. Have we talked about how many of us have died because of all of our comorbidities that have been exposed during this pandemic? I love that we're dealing with children, but we have aged from 20 to 40. That is a lost generation, and they need to have help. My mother went back to school in her late 40s, and she changed my life because I saw how someone later in their years can influence me who didn't have a clue about what college was about. We have to focus on that group as well. I have heard nothing in this wonderful budget that we're putting together. I'm not discounting it. There's been nothing to focus on this group. This group that your children are going to look up to and is going to shape them, all right? We can do everything we want to do for them as children, but if we don't deal with the segment between 20 and 40 years old, we're still going to have another lost generation. And we should learn that from history. It's very apparent. So, what I'm saying is, before you close this budget out, you refocus on those things that we have learned through this pandemic. Streets will always be here, but we need people to walk the streets, people to work the streets.
You have 30 seconds left.
And in this 30 seconds, I think I can come back and tell you why I'm not in favor of it. Can I not? Didn't you say that, Sheila?
Yes, Mr. Bugs.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of Bill 118-21? I don't believe I see anyone online wishing to speak in favor. Is that true, Clerk Jones? Do you see the same thing?
No, I don't see anyone online that's wishing to speak in favor of this bill.
Thank you so much for that. Is there anyone present then wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 118-21 that is present? Please state your name and address.
Sharon Benicki, 3822 South Bend, 3822 Ford Street. It's gonna be a very unpopular comment that I'm about to make. I am in a bad mood. I came home. We'll get to that later. But if you guys are excited about this budget and happy and pleased, then you are so out of touch with the people you are supposed to represent. Earlier this year, you came to, the city came to you guys with their hands out. They needed money for water and sewer. This cooperation agreement that is still costing us taxpayer monies, and yet, they're giving themselves a 2% raise, and they're spending money here and spending money there. And us taxpayers are keep, you pile it on and pile it on. You want us to be excited? Flatline the budget, or better yet, cut it down, instead of every year going up, up, up. You want us to be excited? Get rid of the wheel tax. It was only gonna be there till the roads were fixed, and here we are, 20 years later, still fixing the same roads that it was designed to fix back then. It's a once-in-a-lifetime. You've gotten this money, and yet, you're still taxing the citizens. You want us to get excited? Next year, when the tax rates come out, don't let Portage Township be the highest tax rate in the county. Drop the tax rates. Do what it takes. Tighten your belts. You want to help the citizens. You want them to be excited. You want them to be engaged. You've got people, 40% poverty rates, and all you do is spend, spend, spend. And you wonder why nobody's engaging. They can't afford to be engaged. Every time I say I'm coming here, it's like, why bother? They're not gonna listen. They don't care. They've already made their minds up. And so, I almost didn't come tonight for just that reason. But then, something happened at home, and I said, no, I'm going. But this budget fiasco, and that's what it is, is a fiasco. When I talk to my neighbors, when I talk to my friends, when I talk to the people I know, it's like, how can they keep doing this to us, the citizens? We can't afford this. I look down the streets at the vacant houses. I look at the curbs crumbling. We're not benefiting. I don't know where this money's going. My neighbors don't see where it's going. We look at Western Avenue, where the weeds are growing up through the bricks. Henry, they still haven't gotten the round out. Sheila, they still haven't cut your weeds down. Western Avenue is abysmal. The cement is cracking, and you want to just keep throwing more money because it's such a success? If that's a success, and this budget's a success, maybe you need to reevaluate your priorities. Try living off $35,000 a year, like most of your constituents do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Hello again, Mr. Bugs. If you could please restate your name and address for the record.
David Bugs. I'm coming from the property at 3607 South Main Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46614. Now, I hope my attire doesn't create a barrier for you listening to the words that I'm saying. I don't normally dress like this, but as I said, I was in the doctor's office, and I was listening to things, and this is how I object. There was a gentleman named Jordan. I saw his name come up on the screen. And Jordan asked a very good question. He asked, how is this money being funneled into programs? Now, I'm taking, I'm putting on, I'm a people, I'm a citizen of South Bend. I believe in opportunity for all people, but I want African-Americans to have their equal share of that opportunity. A question that wasn't answered, and it wasn't. Henry, I'm gonna agree with you. We agree sometime. And this question is, that question wasn't answered. Where can we say the money is going into the African-American community to affect issues immediately, right now? So, I'm gonna tell you what I did. So, I did. I purchased a building, $500,000, my wife's savings and mine. We put $250,000 in it, so that we can change our society for our African-American people. I've done it. The way I've gotten help with my programming is through grants, through donors out of the state that I know. I need support for areas that specifically we have expertise in, to change issues almost immediately in our city. We miss an opportunity. If the name Nexus Center doesn't come up in these meetings, you missed an opportunity to say, that's where we're investing. We're gonna, because each one of you have come to our building, except for two, I believe, and Henry, you're invited. That's an opportunity to take care of some of these issues. That question didn't go answered. That's why I came here and sit on the step until somebody opened the door today, because I think there should be something that addresses that, okay? And I've been blessed. I've been privileged to be among those who've been able to have a reasonable income. But with that comes the responsibility to do for others. And today, I'm standing up for others. I put my money, my skin in the game, okay? Not just financially, but my black skin too, okay? And I help all people, black, white, Hispanic, I help them all. But right now, no one can tell me who was the most affected by this pandemic, and what have been, has been said in this chamber, over this budget period, to give specific aid immediately to them. I have a remedy, and I want you all to invest more into what I am saying and what I am doing. And I guarantee you, at the end of the year, we'll have a metric that we will be able to measure the success that we have put into this city and to our African-American community. Once you help them, you're gonna help the entire city, all right? Nihilism results from taking the hope from people, from not being able to meet their basic needs. Nihilism. There's no hope for them. They feel that there's no hope, all right? And I know it because I live it. All of my five brothers served in the military. They all passed away because of drug addictions and things of that nature, because they didn't feel that it was no hope. They felt that there was no hope. But right now, this is, and I think this should be the theme for today.
You do have 30 seconds.
This should be the theme for today. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and with this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, you lead. You lead. Let's see what you do. Okay.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Bugs.
Jason Benicki, 3822 Ford Street. I think anytime we want to celebrate less than 1% of the population being engaged in the budget process, that's a really sad statement. It's, you know, if there is not money put into the budget to modernize the communication between the city and its citizens, then the budget's a failure. We've known for, I've been coming here seven years now, and we've known that communication is not getting to people where they are at. We're trying to make them engage with the city when the city needs to engage the citizens where and how they interact. You know, almost every citizen in the city has a device in their pocket that they can communicate with. Does the city have an SMS texting service to say, hey, we're having meetings here today if you're interested in engaging? No. Do we have an email list that says, hey, we've got a budget process. Would you like to be a part of that? No, we don't. It's 2021. It's beyond time to have those basic minimum communications with our citizens. And then, we talk about generational things. I feel like every year, we hear about some generational investment in something. Usually, it means more debt on the books, and in this budget, it means 26 million in overspend. And they're hoping, hoping in three years to be able to balance the budget, when they've shown exactly the opposite. We've gone from a pattern of probably about a $3 million deficit to almost 27, 26, almost 27 now. We're heading in the wrong direction if we ever plan to balance that budget. And at the end of the day, some of it comes from doubling down on failing programs. Let's put more money into GBI. Why? It has shown over the last five years, no decrease in gun violence in the city, none whatsoever. We've gone the exact opposite direction. Why throw good money after a failing program? It is time to look at it, line by line, and actually evaluate what results we've seen from these investments. And when we see there's no tangible data to back up any improvement, and in some cases, see negative improvement, that it's time to end those investments, regroup, and then, look at what we're investing. But to call this budget a success, to call overspending by over $26 million, when you came out with your hands out and said, hey, we need more money again this year, to a group of citizens you know cannot afford it as a whole, to call that a success? Boy, I have a very different definition of success than that.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak in opposition to Bill 118-21? And I don't believe I see anyone online as well.
No, there's no one else online.
Okay. Thank you for that, Clerk Jones, for that confirmation. So, at this point, we are going to close the public hearing on Bill 118-21. Any council members wishing to make a statement on this bill? Any council members wishing to make a statement on this bill?
Yeah.
Councilman Davis?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, uh, I actually feel the crunch and the pinch that our three speakers that spoke in opposition spoke. And I hate to say "uh" because it sounds like I don't know what I have to say, but I do. They really illustrated what the everyday South Bend resident feels. They are everyday residents of South Bend. I'm everyday resident of South Bend. I think everybody up here is an everyday resident of South Bend. I think the frustration came in and it continues to come in is when those dollars that came in from the federal government, I think I've sent the sheet out to a few of you who was on council, federal dollars, and it said, these things need to be spent. This money needs to be spent on these things. These things are Wi-Fi affordable houses, such, such, blah, blah, blah. And yeah, we are doing those things at a smaller percentage. The rest is reserved for other ideas or programs that may bring in money, may not bring in money. COVID did bring in a clearer understanding and a picture that it's not going well. It's not going well for people of color. It really isn't. And if we missed this opportunity, I think the last time we had pandemic was a hundred years ago. Maybe next hundred years, we may figure this out, right? But I truly believe that, and I said this before, this budget needed to be slowed down. I told you guys a long time ago. I, I think Mr. Parker said, we're going to go do this as fast as we can. And I told him, don't, you know, don't do me any favors. I don't mind spending extra time on a budget. I've said this over and over again over the last several weeks. Do not do me any favors. I spoke with Chair Warner about this, you know. I, I had, and there's always these questions. Well, you can always send the questions in. Well, I mean, that, that's not it. And then it's always, well, Karen ran the meetings away this way. Well, I, I've never heard Councilmember White say that she did. There was no agreement. So I, I really believe that we do have enough time to pump the brakes, figure out an alternative route to what should be done for the residents of South Bend and even ones that are more negatively, negatively impacted by what has happened and what's going on. If we don't, it's going to get worse. We don't have enough police officers to manage the crime that is on the streets. It's clear. It, it takes a whole year for an officer to sign up and get trained and get on the streets. We're not recruiting that fast and they're retiring faster than just that. So if our only way of dealing with crime is to put more officers on the streets, we're in trouble. We are. I, back in two thousand, I think it was nine, I had a vision that we put together an opportunity for the city of South Bend to work with the school corporation. Got that and turned into an ordinance. Thought the ordinance would help propel a real discussion of what we're going to do with the school corporation and see if South Bend, I'm not saying see if South Bend is over the school corporation. I said, a real paradigm shift, things that will bring, you know, a, a, something that made sense. So like a school shuts down in a particular neighborhood, then the school corporation says, hey, South Bend, we're getting ready to shut down a school. What are you going to do with that neighborhood? You know, kind of like a heads up? We're dealing with the same people and the same people in the same environments or same kids go to those schools. And obviously destruction happens after the school closes. You lose retail, you lose population, housing goes bad. If you don't believe me, go over there by Kennedy and LaSalle. It's true. We've lost a lot. Still haven't heard any conversations about what we're going to do with druires. Them bricks are still out there. Drove past it yesterday. No one wants to clean that up. You know, and this is our budget process. This is what we say we knew. That's our memorial document. We're not talking about these things. So, you know, I'm hard pressed to even believe that this is going to work out for us the way that I think it should. And, and I'm also challenged with the idea that council members need to coalition build in order to get something on the budget. No, that's not the way I was taught. I've been here for a long time. Even in the books, it tells you that the administration has to sell the budget to the council. The council doesn't have to coalition build to make sure something goes on, goes, goes into the budget. I don't have to talk to Sharon and Kenneth about working together, put something in the budget so that we can get something passed. It's not my job. My job is to make sure that the budget, it, it will perform for the residents of South Bend. I, I don't know where that misunderstanding came in. But I'm, I'm really, I'm really, really not jaded. I'm challenged by what is happening. And I hope that we don't squander this opportunity. There is a lot of money that we got from the federal government. There's some more money coming in. I'm, I'm, I'm almost for certain the infrastructure bill will pass. And if we do not do something that will be very impactful and will be a economic multiplier for the residents in this city, especially the ones that are needed the most, people that look just like me, then on Judgment Day, we're going to have, we're going to have a heavy expense to pay.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Any other council members wish to make a statement regarding the bill before us? Councilwoman Hammond?
Just kind of carrying off of what Councilman Davis said. This was why I was so surprised because I feel like I still have so many concerns that have not been addressed. I have asked for detailed information I have not yet received. And I'm nowhere in a position with this particular budget to be able to put forth a positive vote on this because I just don't have everything that I've requested. So I just needed to say that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other council members wish to make a comment? Okay, Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan?
Thank you, Chair. I just have a, just a brief comment, mainly just a word of thanks to Mr. Parker and Mayor Mueller for this booklet, number one. And then, two, reminding us the numbers of resident engagement in all the various platforms. Recently, I did bring up the, the city survey that we did in 2020. I, I knew that was a, that was a poll survey, making sure that it was representative from across all six districts. And I recently revisited that survey in light of that conversation. So I appreciate you bringing up that feedback in this conversation. But I especially also appreciate the slides where you pulled some of our council comments and priorities and seeing where that aligns. And, and what I see just in, in, in that information is some alignment there, you know, that, that says something, that's for sure. It certainly means we can continue to listen, and we will. And to, to take your comment, Mayor Mueller, that it's up to us to, to help residents understand what is in this budget and, and how it might help and answer some of the equity questions. So anyway, look forward to, to working together on that in the weeks to come.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tomas Morgan. And President White, you said you had wanted to make a comment?
I'd like to say that, you know, some of the concerns that we've heard through the public hearing portion are those that definitely we will continue to discuss and, and to ensure as best as possible that they are reflected as we move forward. I do know that many of us has visited the, the Mr. Bugs Center. And unfortunately, that was not shared. But again, it is an excellent initiative that can be a game changer for this community, but also for communities of color. I just want to ask a question. Since this is going to continue in the council portion, do we have to take action? Because this is just the public hearing portion.
It's just a public hearing.
So there's no vote that's needed, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so that we will continue to have discussions? That's what, you know, the budget process is, discussions, input. And again, this portion of this, for this particular bill was to have the public input.
Thank you, President White. Vice President Sharon McBride?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say thank you for the information and the presentation. And I do have to say that looking at information that's in the budget based on our council priorities and our neighborhood engagement that we've had, while the turnouts have, could have been, should have been higher and we all would like that, I did get a comparison of, if you would. And of course, we always have work to do, more work to do. But I think that we are at a good start. If you look at the Black Lives Matter, Black People's Budget, if you will, I compared the budget compared to the council's priorities and the administration's 2022 budget. And there is a comparison chart of some of the things that was requested to be, have done or implemented into the 2022 budget. And there's four pages that I have of information that came out of that. And I know it's, it's, tonight is not the time to go through the whole list, but there are specific things that are targeting the minority community. And of course, we definitely need more engagement with that because we are still far behind. But for instance, one of the things that was asked to enact a livable wage ordinance to permanently tie initial wages to low-cost living metrics. And in this budget, it is increasing the minimum wage from ten, ten per hour to twelve dollars an hour and fifteen dollars an hour for full-time. For instance, talking about transportation to and from work to Elkhart County. And it was discussed tonight about using rideshare through transport, of increasing that ridership. And one of the suggestions about young people need good-paying work and full-time employment. And there's a youth employment position funded from BPA for four hundred and eighty thousand dollars to set aside for workforce development programming. And I mean, the list goes on and on. And I think it may be helpful for this list to be made public or also to be given out if the council do not have the side-by-side view. And I think from there, we can continue to build on. And like I said, it's not a lot of time, but there are four pages here that directly impact what was presented or proposed by the Black People's Budget versus what the city council from two years ago that went out to the residential neighborhoods proposed and what the council's priorities are versus what is proposed in the budget. So I think that is information that should be shared and information that we definitely need to talk about as a council and how we can build upon that and move forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman McBride, for your comments on that. I think at this point then, we would just move to entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the whole and report back to the full council.
Move. Second.
Okay, it has been seconded and moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's all yours, President White. This portion of the council meeting is where the common council will hear, hear bills that have been followed and heard on the committee of the whole. I would like to entertain a motion to go directly to the resolutions portion and then to circle back to the third readings because, you know, we have two of our guests who are here and could be more to speak on resolutions. And I really sincerely appreciate you still being with us. Kind of knew that this was going to be a long meeting, but again, not this long. So I would like to entertain a motion to...
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. I think I have to do roll call, right?
Yes.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you so much, council members. And we'll now go directly to our resolution portion. Clerk Jones, will you please read Resolution twenty-one dash sixteen?
Resolution twenty-one sixteen, or...
Forty-six. Forty-six. I can't hear my eyes.
Twenty-one forty-six. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving the issuance of scrap metal junk dealers' recycling operation licenses for calendar year 2021 pursuant to Section four dash fifty-one of the South Bend Municipal Code.
Thank you. Is there a committee report? Health and Public Safety?
He's not here. But as vice chair, I will tell you that this was heard in Health and Public Safety and comes forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. We do have a presenter that is before us. We do ask that you state your name and address and give us a brief overview of Resolution twenty-one dash forty-six.
Gabriel Murray, offices in the South Bend City Clerk's Office. Council, thank you for your time. Happy to report that we have six scrap metal applications. If you look at the packet that I sent you all, the first page is the application. The second page is the site plan. And the third portion of that packet is the recommendations from city departments, including code enforcement, fire, and police. If you look on the first page, the recommendations are on the bottom. And so I'm happy to report all the scrap metal applications have been approved. And I'm, yes, they have been approved.
You have any additional comments?
I, I have no additional comments.
Council members, do you have any questions that you would like to ask the petitioner regarding Resolution twenty-one forty-six? See, now, we'll now move to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak in favor of this resolution?
There is no one online waiting to speak in favor of this resolution.
Is there anyone waiting to speak in opposition?
There is no one waiting to speak in opposition as well.
Thank you. Council members, I would like to entertain a motion at this time.
Move for passage.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Resolution twenty-one dash forty-six has been adopted. Clerk Jones, will you please read Resolution twenty-one dash forty-seven?
Twenty-one forty-seven. A joint resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend and the school board of the school corporation of South Bend memorializing their efforts and intents to form a cooperative educational committee with the mission of working together for the betterment of our children, our schools, and our city.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, President White. This came before the Community Relations Committee and comes to us this evening with a favorable recommendation.
Now, I would like to ask the sponsor to state your name and address and to give us a brief overview of the joint resolution that is before this council.
Thank you, President White. Troy Warner, common council with offices in this building. Like to come up, President Anella. So this kind of started in 2019. President White and I had a discussion that there had never been a joint meeting of the full bodies of the South Bend Common Council and the South Bend School Board. So in January of 2020, three weeks before everything shut down due to COVID, we had our first joint meeting. And this document was kind of an offshoot of that meeting. It got kind of delayed a little bit because of COVID. And then we, we picked up the progress of, of making this document and this joint resolution. I want to thank Councilmember Hammond for then hosting a, a second meeting through the Community Relations Committee. through the Community Relations Committee in June of 2017 in which we had a public meeting to go through this joint resolution. The joint resolution establishes a joint committee made up of individuals from the city, the schools, and the community. The purpose of which is to... The purpose of which is to advise and inform the council, the school board, the mayor, and the school superintendent. The committee would exist of 14 members from the community, two members of the school board, two members of the common council, representative of the mayor's office, and representative of the school superintendent's office. I thank Mr. Anella and thank Dr. Warren and Stephanie Ball for their assistance on this document, this resolution. And the school board passed this resolution on the 20th. And now this resolution is before us. President Anella?
Thank you, Councilman Warner. I just want to say, your meetings might be longer than ours, so... I'm enjoying it, and I'm enjoying the budget process from the other side. And I almost spoke a couple times tonight, but I thought I'd refrain from that. First of all, I just want to say, good evening. Thank you. Thank you, President White. Thank you, Councilman Warner and all the members of the council. Mr. Mayor, it's great to be here. It's great that we finally seem to be approaching the finish line with this. And also, to all the work that Councilman Warner did, also Dr. Warren put in yeoman's work as well on this. My name is John Anella. I'm currently serving as the president of the Board of Trustees for the South Bend Community School Corporation, 215 Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana, 46601. Our two bodies first met jointly back in February of 2020. And little did we know how much the world would change only a few weeks after that. So here we are, 19 months later. And it's hard to describe what we've been through as a country, as a society, and as a community. These tumultuous times only reinforce the importance of us working together. Last Monday, the South Bend School Board voted to approve the joint resolution that is before you this evening. And we are here tonight asking you to approve the joint resolution. Our fates are intertwined, for better or worse. As I've sat here this evening listening, I've made a list of things that came up. Pre-K, transport, bus driver shortage, after-school programs, United Way, Boys and Girls Club, housing, homelessness, circuit breaker, COVID relief funds. I mean, it could go on and on and on. The point is, we need to be working together. This is a simple resolution that demonstrates we understand there is a brighter future when we work together. Our students, our families, our residents, our community needs us to work together. And frankly, they expect us to. This is only a first step, but an important step for a better South Bend. We hope you approve this resolution tonight so we can get to work. Thank you.
Thank you, President Anella.
Thank you very much.
So the co-sponsors of the bill include President White, Vice President McBride, Councilmember Lee, Councilmember Niskoski, Councilmember Tomas Morgan, and Councilmember Hammond. Any of the co-sponsors wish to make a statement? We'll start with President, the always eloquent President White.
No, I can say that I had the opportunity to go to the school board meeting and offer comments at that time. I'm very grateful that we are at this point and that this joint resolution is before the council.
And your comments were much better than mine.
Just thank everyone for their efforts. And Councilwoman Hammond for hosting these two, one, the joint resolution, but also the meetings that we held, basically the one at Century Center. So thank you as well.
I guess I would just like to say thank you for all your work and efforts on this. 19 months is quite a long time when you take and think about, well, when you think about everything that's happened during that time and the things that it stopped and the progress and the people that it's hurt along the way. But this resolution in itself is such a positive step for our community. And I agree with you that people expect us to work together. And they expect us to be effective and for us to think about the city, about our residents, and about our children. Because at the end of the day, it should always be about your children because they're the ones who's going to be taking all of our seeds at some point. So thank you, Councilmember Hammond and Warner and President Anella for all your work. I believe this was the 11th revision, I was told, before you finally got to this resolution. So, so great job. And I totally support the resolution. Thank you.
I would just like to say, again, a thriving city got to have great schools. And we are the people who have been put in place through the school board, common council, to provide leadership for the next generation. And again, the things that we do will affect many generations to come. So this resolution is a great starting point. It's a lot of great things in it, a lot of great nuggets. And if we apply all of the things that's in this resolution, then not only will our schools be better, but our city will be better and our children will be better. And the children is the fountain of youth. And when we invest in them, we live forever.
Any other comments?
I'll just say thank you for being a co-sponsor as well. And it's really poignant, the points that you made, Mr. Anella, about how we intertwine. And the same issues that we're discussing tonight are the same issues you guys face. And so that is very encouraging and enlightening that we should be working together because we have the same residents, parents, children. And it's important for us working together and not in silos. So I'm excited about us moving forward as a community.
Council members, besides the co-sponsors, do you have...
I'm the only one.
I just want to add, I just, everyone has already said all the important things. I do just want to lift up additional thanks to all the, to the members of the drafting committee. I mean, it is no small task to get these words on this page and to finalize it and to pass two bodies. I mean, that's, that's an incredible feat. So thank you to those in our council. It's Councilmember Warner. And so, yeah, this is a great first step. As you said, President Anella, let's get to work.
Councilmember Hammond and then Councilman Davis?
Thank you. Couple pieces of the resolution, if I may, that I find really important is that the Joint Educational Cooperative, Cooperative Committee should be a driving force of partnership and cooperation between the school board, the council, the superintendent, the mayor, and the community. It commits to public meetings with public input. And it commits to the council and the school board meeting no less than once a year in a joint meeting. Those are really important pieces for us to look forward to and to recognize the significant change that we can bring about in working together. And thank you for being here this evening, Mr. Anella.
Councilmember Davis?
Yeah. I looked at the resolution. I think that public needs to be in front of schools on there. I've noticed that on that piece of work. That was one of the things that I really had an issue with because, Mr. Anella, you're over at Public School Corporation, right? Yeah. And I think that what we do over here is public dollars as well, public government, local government. So I think it needs to be public schools because we need to name public schools. We have parochial schools here. We have charter schools here. We have independent schools here. So we need to talk about public schools because that's what we were talking about. So I don't know, I'm going to offer that as a motion sometime soon. But I think that that definitely needs to be in there because we're talking about public schools. Public schools are under attack by the charter school system. So we need to have a direct attention, it needs to be intentional, public schools, just not schools.
Thank you.
I'm not done.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The other thing that I wanted to say as well is that this was an ordinance that was put through in 2009. Offered this common council, the city of South Bend, to the school corporation. I don't know where, how something so simple and so needed became so much of a big deal that we have to create some type of community committee to assess these things that are undefined. Look, I'm not against it, clearly, because I set the baseline for it, you know, the foundation. But I don't want us to be, become so, so smart that we take this and we mold into something that is going to be nothing. We tend to do that as human beings. We create more bureaucracy, more departments. We create more and more and more because we really have to have the best people at the table. But sometimes it really just takes something really small, simple, and just keep it that way so it can actually work for the betterment for us all. But I want to make a motion. And I really hate that I wasn't a resolution as a co-sponsor, Troy. That wasn't, I just thought that that was sport taste, but you win that one. But I make a motion that we add public school...
Make that motion after I do public hearing?
Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem.
No.
No problem.
So we're now going to go to the public hearing portion. Again, thank you, President Anella. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak in favor of Resolution 21-17?
There is no one online waiting to speak in support of resolution.
Is there anyone online wishing to speak in opposition?
There is no one online wishing to speak in opposition as well.
Is there anyone in the audience that wished to speak in support of Resolution 21-47? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? The public hearing portion is now closed. Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we add public in front of schools on that document as a final way of expressing our intentions.
So there is a motion to add to the language, the word "public." Is there a second to that motion?
Exactly where are we adding the...
Here, if you look at, it says, "Joint Resolution, the Common Council, the city of South Bend, the school board of the school corporation of South Bend." So the word "public" distinguished, you know.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Council, Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
I'm sorry, are we, is there any discussion on this or...
No. She called the roll.
Point of order, I believe, when there's a motion and a second...
Yeah.
The table gets to open it up for discussion.
It's open for discussion?
Yes.
Okay, we're now open for discussion, council members?
My question is, if we do add this, does it change the documents or does that have to go back to the school? It is if we're in Congress, so I'm just asking.
So I want some clarity. If we were to add the word "public," would it have to go back to the school board? Attorney Palmer?
If it's a joint motion, it would. A joint resolution would.
Thank you.
Yeah, but look, sir, I just said, but this is what I'm saying. I think that we need to be sensitive to this. I'm a part of this conversation a lot. My sister works over in Chicago and she's a vice president of teachers' union. I hear this conversation nationally. I have a good friend that's in Compton, California, who's the vice president of their school corporation board. If we do not intentionally talk about public school policy, public schools' funds, and name it as "public," we get into a whole nother conversation when you start listing schools because all schools become a part of that conversation. So we have to be very clear about public schools versus parochial charter and whatever school that may be out there. We can laugh about it, we can kid about it if you want to, but that's the truth. And I would think that you would probably be in support of something like that, given your role at the South Bend School Corporation, Public School Corporation.
The issue that is before us at this point in terms of the motion, the recommendation, is that because this was a joint resolution and the school corporation passed the joint resolution, Attorney Palmer, at this point, would, again, I ask the question, would they have to go back?
I believe they would.
Okay, okay.
So I understand...
Is that what we want them to do that?
I understand Councilman Davis's desire, but I do not want to put us in a position where we're having to send that back. So I'd like to retract my second, please.
Okay, so the motion has been made and the second has made as well, but it has been retracted. I believe that that whole issue, once the committee has opportunity to have the discussion, that, you know, if they needed to add the word "public" of the South Bend Public School Corporation, that could come at that time. School board, mm-hmm. Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
But that's not how I read it. I know there was missing in there, but, you know, you guys have it. Y'all win.
Okay, again, I would now entertain a motion regarding the joint Resolution 21-47.
I'd like to move for passage.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride? Okay, Councilmember Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Resolution 21-47 has been adopted. Clerk Jones, will you please read Resolution 21-49?
Twenty-one forty-nine. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana approving the inter-local agreement for the operation of a consolidated public safety answering point in St. Joseph County, Indiana.
Thank you. Is there a committee report? This is from Health and Public Safety?
Yes, this bill came out of Health and Public Safety with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. We have Attorney Pete Austin, that is before us. I did ask him to come and to give a brief overview of Resolution 21-49 and to address any questions that the council may have. I would like to state that this resolution, as well as the other resolutions and the bills, they were heard during the committee meetings this afternoon as well.
Thank you and good evening, Council President White and rest of the council members. And peace be with you after this long meeting here. I did learn a new word tonight, operationalize. Thank you, Mr. Parker. So the inter-local agreement that's before you is an amendment of an agreement that was adopted back in 2014 in connection with the operation of the 911 center, the combined 911 center. Reason that an amended inter-local is before you is because the funding mechanism for the 911 center has been changed. That was changed by the votes of the city of Mishawaka and the St. Joseph County Council, which is now going to have the funding occur by local income tax dollars. And so the inter-local agreement now has a function of... And so, the inter-local agreement now has a function of providing for backup funding for that. The other reason that it's being done is to also encourage, and the county council's on board with this, is amending the county council ordinance, which created the consortium for the 911 center, to include council members on the executive board of that center. And I heard loud and clear today that I think it sounds like the preferences for two from this council, and I will certainly communicate that to our county council at tomorrow night's committee meeting. The funding, the way that would work on the new inter-local is that first step is to determine if the local income tax collected is enough to fund the budget. If it is, there is no backup funding. If, if there's a need for backup funding, then the formula for backup funding has been changed to have it based on 75% from call volume and 25% from the net assessed value. And if there's any excess funding, it'll be used to maintain cash reserves, pay off debt, and be returned in proportion as it was received to the entities that are part of the agreement. And those are the highlights.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions that you would like to ask of Attorney Austin? Any questions? Then I'll go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting online to speak in support of Resolution 2149?
There is no one from the public waiting online to speak in support of Resolution 2149.
Is there anyone online wishing to speak in opposition?
There is no one online wishing to speak in opposition as well.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support of Resolution 49? Anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? The public hearing portion is now closed. Councilmembers, are there any comments that you would like to make prior to me entertaining a motion? Any comments from councilmembers? Seeing none, I would now like to entertain a motion regarding Resolution 21-49. Move for passage.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Resolution has been adopted. We'll now go back to Bill's third reading. This is the portion of our meeting where bills are given a third reading, and actions taken regarding bills that were heard during the committee of the whole. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill, substitute Bill 103-21, a third reading?
103-21, third reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code to make miscellaneous changes for clarification and consistency to simplify development process.
I would like to note that this bill has already been accepted as a substitute during the committee of the whole. Councilwoman Nizgatsky, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding substitute Bill 103-21?
Yes, President White. Substitute Bill 103-21 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I will now entertain a motion regarding substitute Bill 103-21.
Move for passage.
Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Substitute Bill 103-21 has been passed. Clerk Jones, will you please read Bill 114-21, and give it a third reading?
114-21, third reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code to increase the maximum building height in the U3 urban neighborhood, 3/3 district, UF urban neighborhood, Flex District, NC neighborhood, Center District, and C Commercial District.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nizgatsky, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole in regards to Bill 114-21?
Yes, President White. Bill 114-21 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 114-21. To move for passage?
Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Bill 114-21 has passed. Clerk Jones, we'll now ask you to read Bill 115-21, and give it a third reading.
115-21, third reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, for budget transfers for various departments within the City of South Bend, Indiana, for the year 2021.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nizgatsky, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding Bill 115-21?
Yes, President White. Bill 115-21 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I will now entertain a motion regarding this bill. Move for passage.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Bill 115-21 has passed. We'll now move to Bill 116-21. And this has been accepted as a substitute during the committee of the whole. So, Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill, substitute Bill 116-21, a third reading?
116-21, third reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city services operations for the year 2021. 194,373 from the Parks and Recreation Fund, number 201. 920,41 from the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, number 202. 40,000 from the Law Enforcement Continuing Education Fund, number 220. 235,000 from the Code Enforcement Fund, number 230. 484,544 from the COVID-19 Response Fund, number 264.
Are you reading?
I think that's the, Clerk Jones, are you reading the right?
Is that 116-21?
The substitute?
Substitute.
The substitute bill?
When I took out the 25.
Yeah, this, that's right, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Start again.
Okay. I'm sorry.
No problem. 116-21. Third reading of an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city services operations for the year 2021.
This is the substitute that we were given, so you're reading from.
The original, you're reading that one.
No problem. It's my last call.
Yes, lady.
Third reading of an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city services operations for the year 2021. Of 8,300,000 from the General Fund, number 101. 194,373 from the Parks and Recreation Fund, number 201. 920,41 from the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, number 202. 40,000 from the Law Enforcement Continuing Education Fund, number 220. 235,000 from the Code Enforcement Fund, number 230. 1,500,000 from the American Rescue Plan Fund, number 263. 484,544 from the COVID-19 Response Fund, number 264. 210,000 from the Fire Department Capital Fund, number 287. 1,798,000 from the Local Income Tax Certified Shares Fund, number 404. 56,500 from the Local Income Tax Economic Development Fund, number 408. And 758,270 from the Solid Waste Capital Fund, number 611.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. I will now entertain a motion regarding substitute Bill 116-21.
I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Without the guarantee, nay.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Six ayes. Substitute Bill 116-21 has passed. We'll now move into Bill's first.
Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 119-21 a first reading?
119-21, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, reaffirming ordinance number 10736-20, and fixing the annual pay and monetary fringe benefits of sworn members of the South Bend Police Department for calendar year 2022.
Would like to entertain a motion that this bill be sent to Personnel and Finance for third reading and vote at the full council level on 10/11/2021.
So moved.
Second. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Will you now give first reading to Bill 120-21?
120-21, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, fixing maximum wages of Teamster employees for calendar years 2022, 2023, and 2024.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion that Bill 120-21 be sent to the Personnel and Finance Committee, set for third reading and vote at the full council on October 11, 2021. So moved.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Will you now give a first reading to Bill 121-21?
121-21, first reading on an ordinance fixing maximum salaries and wages of appointed officers and non-bargaining employees of executive departments of the City of South Bend, Indiana, for the calendar year 2022.
I will entertain a motion that Bill 121-21 be sent to the Personnel and Finance Committee in public hearing at the council level for 10/11/2021. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Will you now give first reading to Bill 122-21?
122-21, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, setting the annual salary for the mayor for calendar year 2022.
I will entertain a motion to send this bill to Personnel and Finance Committee in public hearing at the council level for October 11, 2021. So moved.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. We'll now move to unfinished business. Councilmembers, is there any unfinished business at this time? Seeing none, I will now go to new business. Is there any new business? Seeing none, we'll now move to the privilege of the floor. Is there anyone present wishing to speak on the privilege of the floor? We do ask that you state your name and the address, and you have three minutes to share your concerns.
Sharon Benicki, 3822 Ford Street. I got home from work today. I was gonna sit home and relax, but no, Bob the Builder is still building. He is now building his third addition to the red-tagged second edition that is built to the first red-tagged addition, and all I keep hearing is there's nothing we can do. They're taking him to court for fines for the first edition, but then I have to keep calling him, and they'll come out, they'll tell him to cease and desist. But nothing's gonna happen. He's just gonna keep building and building, and they'll take him to court. He never shows up to court. He owes the city already, what, $3,500 from two years ago from animal control for dogs that he doesn't have? And he's now down to two dogs that he doesn't have, because he's now on, he's on the list to never legally own a pet, but he still has them. The quality in the neighborhood, the quality of life is terrible. I got neighbors, you know, all around me. Is he gonna quit hammering? When's he gonna quit hammering? Nine o'clock at night. It's dark. He's out hammering. He's out banging. Kid behind me is now working from home, but he's gotta listen to the banging and hammering and noise going on all day long. The city's all bark, no bite. Something's gotta give here. I mean, why make ordinances and say we're gonna do things, and anybody can do what they want, when they want, how they want? That's what's got me really irritated, because there is no peace and quiet in my neighborhood or at home. On another side note, I was going through the packet tonight, and I noticed that on the scrap metal dealer's paperwork, there was an application, and whoever sent in part of it redacted the guy's social security number and date of birth. But then on the next page, for all the world to see is the guy's driver's license with his name and address and date of birth, and nothing's redacted. I don't know, if I was a citizen, I'd probably be upset that all this was out there. You might wanna look into procedure for that. Thank you.
Thank you as well. And I do know that you have had a conversation with Councilwoman Nizgatsky, and we clearly understand that that is a problem, and so we do what we can on our end to address that as well.
Something's gotta give.
You state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Jason Benicki, 3822 Ford Street. So, work had kept me away for about two years, and boy, I wish things had changed a lot in two years, but sadly, a lot of things are the same two years that I've been gone, for the seven years I've been coming here. Clerk's office, still a mess. Unfortunately, the Tribune's covered that at length, you know. We still can't decipher the difference between needs and wants when we go to spend money. Sure, people want a nice rec center, but we really need curbs, sidewalks, lights. We need, you know, neighborhoods that are safe and participle, you know, able for people to participate in. You know, we want a lot of things, but we need affordable. You know, we want a lot of things, but we need affordable situation for residents instead of raising rates every time we turn around. We are the most expensive city to live in around here. And unfortunately, almost everybody up there has two-plus streams of government income, so they forget what it's like for the regular citizen who has one stream of income when it's an extra $15 a month here. Oh, schools want a little bit more tax money. We're gonna support that, but hey, that's a little more money out of your pocket here. Oh, you know what? We need to raise money for the trash rates. Here's a little bit more here. We always seem to just take, take, take. Nobody sits here and says, hey, why are we giving out raises? Why are we, you know, Henry hit a nail on the head earlier. You know, we keep adding departments and departments and departments. At some point, we need to stop adding more departments, because all that creates is more department heads, but not actually more work getting done in the neighborhoods, not more work getting done out in the city. At some point, like I said, we have to get the money we're spending, seeing if we're getting any ROI at all before we allocate more and more and more. So like I said, it's been two years I've been gone, but like she said, I'm working from home now. I get off at seven o'clock at the latest every day. Expect to see me every two weeks again, reminding you what you need to do for the citizens of this city, where we need to improve. Because again, seven years of this, I'm not stopping today. I'm not stopping tomorrow. I've got a four-year-old nephew who lives in this city every day, and I wanna make this city a better place for him, not for me, but for him.
Thank you. Seeing no one else that's wishing to speak on the privilege of the floor, the public hearing portion is now closed, and seeing that there's no other business, we stand adjourned. Thank you, councilmembers. I know this was a long meeting, so I really appreciate each and every one.